I would ask for a moment of silence to celebrate the life of Clarence Inky Youngworth, who passed away this week at 98 years old. Inky was history in Oshkosh. He probably knew, he knew more about history, I think, in Oshkosh than everyone in this room put together and then some. He was a colorful character. He has, he helped preserve the history of our city. He saw this city go from a lumber-centric economy to what it is now. And I think it's rather fitting, while his, while his death is sad, the fact that he worked for 72 years with the Oshkosh Corporation and even up until the week before his death. Inky was Oshkosh, is Oshkosh, and he will be a part of Oshkosh long after he's gone. So if we could have a moment of silence for Inky. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, would everyone please rise for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Herman?
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. Mayor decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents. And the pledge will be led by Councilmember Pansky and her kids. And I think we got a couple others from Washington Elementary. Kids want to come?
A Dilegence to the life of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a certificate for you kids and a few questions for you if you give us your name, age, your school, and your favorite subject.
My name is Lydia. I am 10.
Where do you go to school?
Washington Elementary.
Favorite subject?
Um, I really like gym.
Okay, great. Lydia, here's this.
Otis. My name is Otis Pansky. Um, I'm, I'm seven. I'm in second grade Franklin Elementary School. My favorite subject is science.
Okay, and thank you for helping us. And you must be Oliver.
Yeah, I'm Oliver Pansky. I'm 12 years old in the seventh grade at Perry Tipler Middle School, and my favorite subject is band.
Okay, great. Thank you, kids. Here's your certificate. Now you can stay and watch the council meeting or go home and do more enjoyable things. First on the agenda is an introduction of a new staff member and Deputy Finance Director, Trina Larson. Would you please introduce your new person?
Good evening. I would like to introduce Haley Palmquist. Haley joined the city in September of 2016. On January 1st, 2018, she was promoted into our new accounting manager. She is very dedicated to the mission and vision of service for the finance department and continues to be a great asset for the city. So, our council.
Trina, just for a second. Because is it a new position or is she filling a current?
She is filling a vacated position.
Okay, so what's the role, just for the citizens?
Excellent question. And so Haley is taking the lead on both of our accounting division and our collections division. So she oversees about eight staff members. And so the citizens will see her in the collections bay assisting the cashiers with the daily cash receiving, as well as in the back end, working through the ERP transition and working with the accounting staff.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I just think in the future, Mr. Roloff, as we introduce some of our new employees, we can kind of get a flavor of some of their jobs. We may know what they are, but you're our only employee, so we don't always know who they are either.
I learned something during these introductions as well.
There you go. So I think, thank you. Congratulations.
She helps pay the bills, so you want to be really nice.
Yeah. Just, just one more. You indicated that Haley started with the city in 2016. Now she's coming to the finance department. Where was she before that?
So prior to being promoted, she was our staff accountant. So she had joined the city and it was a new position and was such a tremendous asset and has contributed so much into the ERP implementation and the further development of the finance department as a whole. Definitely earned this promotion and will be a very valuable asset in the future and in many years to come for the city.
So I'd imagine we'll be seeing her at the Long Range Finance Committee, probably?
I think everybody should moonlight at the Long Range Finance. I enjoy it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. New position. Next on the agenda, we have citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, and limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh and the common council may address at a future meeting. It must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam, did we have anyone to register to speak at this?
Yes, we do. Kenneth Kelwicky, 49, 44 Highway 45 South.
Thank you, city council members, for the opportunity to speak to you. I had emailed a letter to you last week, and the reason that I'm here in addition and I passed out another letter for your review is that there was a title in it. I have been the collection agent for the city of Oshkosh, and I know there's another cohort that is going to be in the collection department, and I welcome her. We have done business with the city for over 20 years in the collection area. Over the years, the relationship with us is that we collected open accounts and there were accounts that would not pay, that we took judgment for the city, advancing court costs, and we paid the attorney fees. We had one case in June of last year where we had taken the judgment, sorry, June of 2006. Through the years, we have done our collection work, and we obtained the debtor willing to pay the judgment balance to the city. The debtor came to the city in September to pay the judgment in full amount in excess of $7,000. The debtor's attorney verified with us the next day that the judgment had been satisfied. We contacted the receivables department, were told they knew nothing about it. We verified the judgment satisfaction through Wisconsin C-CAP. We billed the city as that is normal procedure when a debt is paid outside of our office to the client. We were informed by the city, no payment had been made. Therefore, when we billed them, they would not pay our invoice. After non-payment, we did a number of requests, invoices, and we had one meeting with the city. We explained our contract and the work, and we were promptly fired, and we were also blessed with a complaint with the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions, which is our licensing agent, on a baseless complaint. We have tried to resolve this over the time and have not been successful. All I want to present, a debtor went to the city with in excess of $7,000. A satisfaction was issued by the city of Oshkosh on receipt of a payment of $5,155.88. We were told by the city, no money was received. I would request, number one, payment for my invoice, and you folks do an investigation and make sure that the remaining accounts that I have paid, our company funds for the court costs and attorney fees, that we be reimbursed for them or have the collection right, which is in statute. I would respectfully request that you folks hear my complaint and further investigate it, because this is only one side, and I know there's two sides to every question. So I thank you for your time, and I wish to hear back from you folks. Does anyone have any questions over the time?
Thank you.
Terry Wooler, 1357 Seabee Avenue.
I know he was here before.
That's all I have for citizen statements.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda items. These are items of a routine administrative nature that were voted on by the council on a single roll call vote. Staff records approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, is there anyone who signed up to address any of these items?
I have no one registered.
We'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Palmary.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Mauer here by chance? Thank you. So I just had a question on this. So this is apparently an agreement that we have between the school district and the city regarding the Pollock Pool, but there's also a parking lot involved, correct?
Correct.
Could you just like explain that parking lot arrangement a little more and why that's necessary?
Sure. We have the agreement with Oshkosh West High School to utilize the parking lot for parking, essentially for the Pollock Pool, because the on-street parking gets pretty crowded, especially having the skate park there. So it's just another collaboration with the school district. We do have our staff go out and pick up trash and clean up the parking lot during the hours of use and after the use as well.
And, and so the 100%, the agreement says that the city pays 100% of the cost of the lifeguard services, but then we also give like a credit, $40,000? Is that how that works for the parking lot use?
No, it's actually the school district and Recreation Department, since the new Pollock Pool was constructed, it's a recreational amenity, I think, that the community has to offer, and the Recreation Department understands that it's a recreational amenity. So we don't really credit them. We actually, they'll invoice us for the lifeguard services. We'll pay that directly, and then they actually sent us a check for $40,000 as a contribution to the, the operation of the pool.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. I do have a question, Resolution 18-31, which is approve agreement for disposal of contaminated soil from various projects in the 2018-29 Capital Improvement Program, Waste Management Wisconsin, $2,527,500. I think it's important for the citizens to know the tremendous cost we in other communities are incurring for removal of contaminated soil with all of our development projects. So, Mr. Robby?
Yes, this agreement with Waste Management Landfill, you know, as you mentioned, we encounter all sorts of things when we do our street reconstruction projects, as well as many of our other projects. I know the Riverwalk construction projects have been in a former industrial area and have, over the years, encountered some fairly significant contamination that's needed to be addressed. So it's not just our street reconstruction projects. This agreement covers all city projects for the capital years of 2018 and 2019. Going back through, you know, our past agreements, in, for the 2016-2017 years, we had estimated approximately 70,500 tons to be hauled to the landfill. Our actual haul for those two years was about 66,000. So our history's been fairly close on our estimation for these, and you know, as I mentioned, it is, you know, all materials that can't be reused on the site. So whether it's petroleum contamination, fly ash, or old rail ties, or you know, any type of material that we just can't turn around and reuse and has some sort of contamination on it, we need to make sure that it's being managed at a licensed landfill facility.
Councilmember Palmary.
So on that same resolution, Mr. Robby, can you just add a little clarification on when we say that we don't need the use of the sealed quotes? If there's only one source, when in the staff memo, we, we actually reference two sources or two possible suppliers? Can you just clarify that?
Yes, the waste management facilities are the only licensed facilities that are capable of accepting all the materials that we generate on our projects. So the, the reference that I had included in regards to Outagamy County was a reference referring to garbage, municipal waste. But on our street projects, that's, that's not what we're generating. So waste management's the only facility that can accept all of the materials we generate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other council members wishing to discuss anything in here, so would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate 7.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 18-43, modify parking regulations on Ninth Avenue. Anyone registered to speak to this?
I have no one.
Back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate 7.
Next is ordinance 18-44, amend penalties for possession of marijuana adults. And is anyone registered to speak to this?
Yes. Sean Kelderman, West 2457 LeMyra Drive, Brownsville.
Hi, thank you. Mayor Cummings, at the last meeting, you said that at one point, we needed to quit wasting time on this issue and get to more important things such as growing your community. I thought about that, and if I were a young person looking to relocate my family...
We're here to discuss the fine only.
I will get there.
You better get there quickly. This is why we're here.
I have five minutes. Thank you, right? Okay, so if I were a young person looking to start a family, send my kids to school, pay my taxes here, buy my groceries here, the way you're treated and listen to your constituents would be something I pay attention to. Last time I checked, you had over 7,000 residents that asked you to reduce the fine to $25. As written, between $200 and $500, I don't even think changes from the current law. I don't think that respects the wishes of your citizens, nor do I think it shows that you hear them. And if I were looking to move, I would pay attention to that, and I think you should too. Thank you.
Pam?
Dan Rylence, 602 East Parkway.
Good evening. I'm back again. This is the fourth quarter, I think. Hopefully it is, huh? Just to remind you people that I've signed the petition twice, and I'm still supporting the idea of what the petitioner said, you reduce the fine to $25. I don't know of many issues that you have faced on the council where that many people have expressed their interest in anything. How many people expressed interest in Oshkosh Corbin new facility? I doubt 3,700 people. I mean, that's a lot of people. So democracy is supposed to respond to the wishes of the people, and I'm hoping tonight that you will do that. Go back to the petition they want, put it on the ballot. If you can't do it, then by ordinance, reduce it to $25. Thank you very much.
Martha Riesel, 530 Pyle Avenue. Our next speaker will be Mark Kelderman.
Actually Martha Reichel.
Sorry.
That's okay. I had a paper citing some things, and unfortunately, children distracted me before I left, so I winged it. We signed a petition for $25. Personal opinion aside, this should not be taken into consideration. What your citizens asked for should be. Mayor Cummings, your opinion on this matter shouldn't be affecting this. Fact should. It's 2018. Why are we still debating this? We know what this does, and you're destroying lives. You legal, make it illegal and take an option that should be your citizens' option and say that that's not good enough for them. You are going to tell people that they're going to go to jail or pay an immense fine for something that is, we know is not harmful. And not listening to what your citizens have signed, a petition for $25 fine, not 200, not 300, not 100, 25. There are cities in our state of Wisconsin that are doing the same thing. These are major cities, because they recognize that their citizens are not criminals. They shouldn't be treated that way. And until legalization happens across the board, this is how we have to approach it at a city level. Because until we get the state on board, they're not going to be able to say it. We see it. We see it. No one, you know, we see it happening. Your citizens are asking for this. We're trying to make this happen across the state. You said, don't let this, you know, let's not shake the status quo. Yes, shake the status quo. This is how you make change. You start here, and you work your way up. You let your government know you're not happy. We all start by city by city, and the moment Wisconsin sees it, then Wisconsin will be another one of many that are to come. It's time to listen to what your citizens want. Thank you.
Mark Kelderman, W 2457 LeMyra Drive. Our next speaker will be Patty De...
Excuse me. Officer Harris, can you, is, is there clarification to the comments you made beforehand related to responses and decorum within the...
You talk about the college of pre-ambles?
Yes. Yeah, please. Thank you. You know, it is, is that we, you know, we talked about the related topics, citizen statements, call to order, and being considerate. One of the things is, is that, you know, the applause is nice, but we really don't need that. Let's respect the chambers that we're in. We're listening to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Not to be the devil's advocate here, but to me, I thought it was absolutely wonderful to see citizens that are engaged in their government and coming out enough to speak up on an issue. But noise aside, I appreciate all of their appearances, and my heart just melts when I look in the faces of some of these people who were out there for hundreds of hours on cold nights in the rain. So when Mayor Cummings dismisses them lightly and calls them stupid or threatens people that they won't be allowed to speak because they don't conform their arguments around the groundwork that he's laid, I think it does a disservice to the 15% of the people that signed this petition to reduce the penalty for 25 grams or less first possession, simple possession, down to a $25 fine. I would hope that's what we can walk out of here with tonight. If not, we will take compromise. But, you know, I think you're fighting history here, and we're on the wrong side of history. And it's a shame that since the last year when we discussed this, another 129 residents in Oshkosh have a marijuana arrest on their record. And this may not stop that from happening, but this will tell people in Madison that the public wants some cannabis reform. Thank you.
Petisha Deener, 1316 Broad.
I come here this evening, I was listening to the last council meeting at home, and I liked the comments that Mr. Cummings gave, and I am not, I don't want the $25 fee lowered. I feel that it needs to be where it needs to be.
I have no one else registered for this ordinance.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Crowsey.
I just wanted to voice my opinion again. The $200 proposal we have in front of us is, in my mind, out of line with other progressive cities in the state. And court costs aside, the person has to pay the, the bottom dollar on the ticket, so it should be comparable to those cities. Milwaukee, Madison, Neenah, LaCrosse, Wausau, Stevens Point, all have under $200 fines with the fees. My two-tier proposal was rejected. It had support from three people up here and possible other support too with a re-proposal of a different amount for a higher limit fine. So there was four people at least that supported a $50 fee, or $50 fine plus fees up to seven grams. So I look at it as, most people that smoke marijuana probably don't carry an ounce around all the time with them. I would think they would have, you know, three or four grams at the very most with them. So most of the people getting these fines are going to be charged a higher amount where people up here would have been okay originally with a $50 plus fees. So I want to make a motion to change the $200 fine to $150.
We have a motion and a second to reduce the fine to, what did you say, $150?
Yes.
Discussion. Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight actually come from an email that I received from Mayor Cummings stating that the financial burden should be placed on the criminal in this case. With that in my mind and doing a little bit of research and going back on personal experiences, I just wanted to bring to your attention that by putting such a financial burden on somebody, will actually bring more money out of your pockets. Somebody who is struggling financially with this will be put on probation, which costs anywhere from $20 to $60 a month. They will be put through an AODA assessment, which is $225. If that person, if that resident of your community cannot pay that, the county, Winnebago County, can fund that assessment at $225. If they need additional treatment, that can come out of the county's pocket as well. So now as a taxpayer of the county, you are funding this activity as well. In the process of financing such treatment, maybe it's discovered that this person is struggling elsewhere. Maybe they don't have health care. So then health care can be offered to you through Badger Care, which comes from the state of Wisconsin. And you are also a taxpayer to the state of Wisconsin. Now maybe it's also discovered at that time that you're behind on public service, Wisconsin Public Service, right? It's winter, it's cold, they can't shut it off, but maybe you're behind because you're trying to pay your fees, your fines. And guess what? On your public service bill, every month you are paying a low-income assistance fee. So now you're also helping pay that person's public service bill. So my point is, by making this fine as reasonable as possible, you're not only enabling some... you're not only enabling somebody to learn their lesson and move on, but you're keeping a few more dollars in your pocket, Mayor Cummings. This isn't just a problem for somebody who is stupid enough to get caught. It also becomes your problem. Let's come together and solve it together. Listen to the people who've put their butts in motion for two years now and be done with it. Let's lower the fine. It's that simple. Thank you.
Councilman Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Interesting points that were made recently, just a moment ago. Would the same apply to someone who is in arrears on a fine for operating while under the influence? Would the same apply for someone who is in arrears of, in other words, that they would have to, you know, that they could possibly be found with the Wisconsin Public Service? Would similar situations apply to people who are issued citations for other offenses?
I would assume.
So we're carving out a, an exception for one particular type of legal violation. Would that be correct?
A plant, yes.
Would that be, but, no, I'm not, I'm, no. The question is, in violation of a, of, excuse me ma'am. Excuse me ma'am.
Mr. Peck has the floor.
Is marijuana illegal in the state of Wisconsin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I just had a point to make again on this. There's a trend around the country for reducing fines to make it legal. Since our last meeting, two more states have made it completely legal. There's not any states looking at reducing drinking and driving because it's bad. They're looking at a progressive movement of lowering fines on marijuana because they're realizing it's not so bad. And that's the side I want to be on. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. And there are no lights lighting up. We're holding on reducing it from 200 to down to 150. Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
No.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
No.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
No.
Cummings.
No.
Lost 3-4.
So now it takes us to the original amendment, which is 1844, amend penalties for possession of marijuana slash adults. We need a motion and a second.
No, it's already on the floor.
For the discussion, Councilmember Peck.
Mr. Herman, yeah, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. I, you know, mostly, all of you know my background as law enforcement, 30 years. And I think there's a lot of misconception out in the community about how police go about doing their job and how they go about getting people with simple possession. First off, this is an ordinance, an ordinance violation, not a state statute violation, an ordinance violation. If you get arrested with a state statute, then jail time comes into play, probation comes into play, all those other things come into play. But if you get an ordinance ticket in the city of Oshkosh, you pay a fine. That's it, a fine. And what is a fine? A fine is to say your behavior was against the law. There's a punitive side to it. And there's a hope that there's a change in behavior. That's what a fine's about. Right now, it's against the law. Maybe two weeks from now, Madison will take it up and they'll legalize it, and that's great. I don't, you know, and we aren't arguing whether it's medically okay. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I think there's some people thinking that our police department drives up and down neighborhoods, looking for people smoking marijuana streets, maybe, but they don't go in your house. What they want to do is cut the bad guy, the guy that is supplying it to our kids and supplying it to people that shouldn't have it because they're addicted to it. Just last week, for example, on the 18th, the Oshkosh Police Department Vice Narcotics Unit arrested a 27-year-old male, 27 block of Harrison, for multiple delivery of heroin. Now, that's a dangerous drug, very dangerous. A search warrant was executed. That's how they do it. It's a search warrant. They got into a house on Vine Avenue where they seized heroin, marijuana, drug paraphernalia, a handgun. All right? We had a murder in this city a couple of weeks ago because of a bad drug deal going down south. We need to clean up our city. I know it's opiates, that's a whole different story too. But all-time death highs. It's still, if you go outside, if, even in the city of Oshkosh, you get stopped by UWO police officer, it's going to be a state statute, non-ordinance. You get stopped by a state police, it's state statute, it's non-ordinance. So just remember that. Also, it's still illegal to drive under the influence of marijuana. It's a controlled substance at this point yet. 346631A says you cannot operate a motor vehicle over, under the influence of alcohol or controlled substance. Marijuana is still considered a controlled substance. We can't change that. Yes, we can change the fine. But does that really accomplish? You may think so. You're right. But it also leads to, you know, other illegal activity. It leads to other things. You may sit in your house and, and, and smoke your marijuana, and that's fine. You do whatever you would like to do in your own private residence. But I would be willing to bet that over 50% of all ordinance violations come because you committed another violation by driving maybe and were driving too fast. Or you went across the center line, or you went through a stop sign, or a stop light. You did something that created that traffic stop. Then you, the officer has a right to pat you down and if you come across the other thing. The other violations are probably more important than the possession violation, so you get the ordinance. They don't go out looking for this stuff. Those that are, unless you order large amounts and then the post office and neighbors and other people get concerned because of the amount of trafficking going in and out of the property or a car driving up as you're buying your marijuana and things, that alerts them to that. That's why we have a vice narcotics squad because of these things. So we are reducing the fine from where it was. It was $325, so that's $125 difference. It's bringing the fine down from $547 to $389.50. So that's $157.50 difference. So we are addressing your issue to a point. I understand you want it to $25. But again, what is a fine? There's a punitive side and there's a hope that there's an alternative behavior. It may not happen, obviously, especially if you believe in cannabis and believe what it all can do. But at this point, I can't support it below $200, the base fine, so I'll be voting in favor of $200. Thank you.
Councilman Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I applaud you for getting all the signatures that you did. It's part of our government system. Thing we have to remember is, yes, we have, we have a democracy, but it's a representative democracy. And that 50.1%, just because you have 51.1% doesn't mean that that is how things are going to go. We see that, that that is why we have courts of law. That, there was a quote that was written in a Supreme Court case a few years ago, that our constitution is here to protect the weak minority from the arrogant majority. Your voice was heard. Mr. Kelderman talked about compromise. We are compromising. You can shake your head and say we're not. But the fact is, this is still illegal. We are not talking about other ordinance violations and changing the fines for those. Later on tonight, we'll be talking about changing our special events policy and how we assess those costs. I'll have comments related to that. But the fact is, this is still illegal in the state of Wisconsin. We're not talking about medicinal marijuana. We're talking about the laws that are on the books in this state. This is illegal behavior. I am willing to lower it to 200. It's a 31, it's a 31% reduction. But I will not, I cannot go down to make, to make something that is illegal basically equal to a parking ticket. And again, I applaud your efforts. Now, go down to where they need to be directed is in Madison and get the laws changed there. We're doing our part here right now.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one in which, you know, I've wanted to hear what the audience has had to say, and we went through this, obviously, last year and then we're going through it now. You know, I wasn't overly impressed about a year ago because I actually was one of the individuals that was approached to sign the petition. And I don't necessarily think it's the organization. It was the person who was, you know, passing along the clipboard for a signature. But in the manner in which they approached, you wouldn't have even known exactly what you were signing for. So I'm going on good faith that it was handled much differently this time than, say, a year ago. A little bit conflicted about how to vote today because typically if you have something that personally benefits you, you typically recuse yourself from discussion and from a vote. You know, that's certainly not, obviously, something that's been taking place. So that's not something that allows me to be favorable for this. The other thing is, I was, I was anxious to see how the folks that showed up today would conduct themselves. And I could have been very easily swayed to go with Mr. Crowsey's suggestion of possibly going down to 150. But immediately, the personal attacks, whether you like the mayor, you agree with what he says, he obviously also represents constituents who feel as he does. So there's never any appropriate time to personally attack anybody, whether you're on the dais or whether you're in the audience. I don't think that was appropriate. I don't think it's fair. I wish today it would have been more about behavior, say, of Mr. Rylance, who's in the audience, who has an opinion, is very supportive of what the group is saying, but yet while my, well, may not appreciate all of the comments, certainly conducts himself in a manner which is respectful. So I'll be honest, right now, I'm not 100% sure if I'm going to vote no completely because I'm irritated by the process of how people have been treated, as well as concerns of area conflict of interest. Or because I do believe in compromise and I do believe in listening to what constituents have to say, that perhaps I'll agree to the proposal of going to 200 for a fine.
Just one comment and I'll direct this at Pam or Lynn. I believe when we took the oath of office, we swore to uphold the constitution, the laws of the state of Wisconsin and so forth, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. I think I've been very, very upfront about my feeling of this all thing since day one. I think anything we do to reduce and change an ordinance, which by doing so, in effect, we are condoning and even encouraging illegal behavior by reducing the fine for breaking the law. And that's what we're doing. We're giving bonus points for breaking the law. We have laws in this country. There are consequences for breaking the law. It's, I think it's a very easy concept to understand. As long as this, if there's a law in the state, we have an obligation to uphold that law. If you want change, change happens in Madison. Virtually everything we do is dictated by Madison. Councilmember Paul Mary.
Again, I want to thank those people that went out and just spent the time that they did participating in their local government. I was willing to support a reduction because I felt, to be honest, it kind of came in the middle. And because we don't have a municipal court that would enable that reduction in the court costs, it seemed like a reasonable place to be. With that said, I too am a little disappointed with the way in which some of the folks have conducted themselves. I was pleased to see some improvement over last year, but then it, it seemed to take, it went south. It just went south. But I will be supporting the $200 or the, the language as is, the 200, but not more than 500. And I believe Councilmember Herman indicated three, what was it, 3?
389.
389, but that was including court costs. So just wanted to clarify that. 389 including court costs. And the five.
Oh, let me get it here.
If someone could help me out there.
Yep, just one second there. Let me pull it back up.
So I just wanted to clarify.
The previous fine was 325 is the current forfeiture with a forfeiture with court cost of 547.
Right.
And at $200, the court, with court cost would be 389.50. So it's a reduction of $157.50.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. That's all I have to say.
Councilman Crowsey.
I just wanted to say that I'll be supporting the 200, obviously. It's progress. I mean, this year we did a lot more than we did last year and maybe next year and the year after we'll do more. And maybe by then, the state will have it, you know, legal by then, but all we can do is the best we can do. And today is $200 plus court fees, so I'll be, I'll be supporting this.
All right, I see no others. Councilmembers want to speak. This is ordinance 1844, amend penalties for possession of marijuana adults to reduce the fine from 325 to $200. Would you, everyone's clear on that? Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
No.
Carried 6-1.
We have three pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 1845, authorize the chief of police and/or director of transportation to establish temporary speed limits for special events. Pam, is there anyone?
I have no one registered.
Let's let the chambers clear.
All right, to repeat, ordinance 18-45, authorize the chief of police and/or director of transportation to establish, establish temporary speed limits for special events. You said no one wanted to speak to that. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Create 7.
Ordinance 18-46, create premier economic development district slash sawdust district. Is there anyone who has registered to speak to this?
I have no one registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Mr. Davis, you want to just kind of give the highlights of what this would do in that sawdust district? Obviously, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. This isn't, I mean, we don't own all the buildings. All the buildings aren't up for sale. So this is a long-range plan, I take it. So you want to just kind of do some of the highlights of what us designating this as a economic development district premier?
Yes. State law permits the city to create two new liquor licenses that can only be used in this district. That's separate from the other liquor licenses that the city deals with on an annual basis. These two new licenses would be limited to just the 40 acres that we've identified and can only be used in those 40 acres for now and perpetuity.
So it's another economic tool?
Yes, it's a tool in the toolbox.
To bring something into that area and potentially have, depending on the plans of a developer or somebody approaches the city and it isn't even per se a developer, but an idea that we would be able to work with them and have potentially a liquor license available?
Correct.
One quick question, Alan. You said 40 acres. The Buckstaff site is about eight acres, so it's another 32 acre. I think so everyone understands. What are the kind of the boundaries?
It starts south of the Buckstaff property, about 14th, and goes north along Main Street, on the east side of Main Street, up until about 9th, and then it kind of jogs over to the west side of Main Street as well, up to Sixth Avenue. So in general, it includes a lot of potential development locations in the Sawdust District.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Just to follow up to that, this isn't the same as what we're proposing in Oshkosh as far as changing the business park.
Oh, the zoning has nothing, all right.
Okay. So this doesn't really hamper per se development, it actually enhances potential development in that because we really haven't put together a total vision of what we really all want. We've had some discussions in that Sawdust District and that.
Correct.
But obviously, it opens the door for other developers to think about what could go in that area. It isn't all up to us to develop it per se, but it's just, so I just want people to know that it's just not etched in stone exactly what's all going on here. Just because we designate this, it doesn't mean we got something ready, shovel ready.
Yes, this is just for the liquor licenses. It has nothing to do with other investments in that neighborhood. It's, the Sawdust District is a concept right now. The two new liquor licenses, as you have indicated, another tool in the economic development toolbox.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palmary.
Yes, Mr. Davis. So when we think about a premier economic development district, and, you know, in this particular case, it does give us this added benefit, if you see it that way, of adding two additional liquor licenses. But I guess my question is, that word premier on the economic development district, does that lend itself to a higher standard, a higher design standard, a higher level of entertainment? Or could we end up seeing a red light district in terms of nighttime entertainment? I mean, can you help make that distinction there?
I believe premier is just based on the state statute that authorizes cities to enact this ordinance, so premier has nothing...
So premier doesn't have any aesthetic value here, right?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. One, either one of you can answer, but regarding the assessment, one of the requirements to establish this district was a future value of above $20 million. And I questioned the assessment that we have. The last one that we have is back in November, and that was when the arena was not even complete. And then I think you had stated that our next assessment would be August. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's effective as of whatever the, the assessment's essentially a snapshot of the value as of January 1. It doesn't get certified until August. That's when we send our values to the state, and then they verify them and certify them usually in November.
Now, how accurate are these? I mean, I would assume that they would have some idea of what the future value of that one particular arena would be, but does this also take into consideration all of the public infrastructure improvements that we've done? The traffic lights, the streets, the sewers?
They don't account for that.
Or is it just?
Property value.
It is just property values.
Kelly Kniforth, our economic development manager, is the one who did the research. But essentially, it's value that can grow to a minimum of $20 million. Isn't that correct, Alan? Correct. Because as of, I thought of that after I hit the send key to you because it doesn't have the value, as you pointed out, it doesn't have the value yet. It won't have the value until January 1, 2018, even though the arena was done prior to the end of the year, so.
But we are confident that we'll hit that $20 million future value requirement?
I am very confident we'll reach that because we've made sure that we included the potentials for the different lots to be developed. And the funny thing is, it doesn't say exactly when it has to be completed and what happens if you don't meet that requirement.
That was my next question.
We enforce it ourselves.
Okay, so I guess we'll kind of cross our fingers for that assessment in August. My next question then is, both of these licenses have a price tag of $30,000. Where does that go specifically? Does that just come into the city and we use that for what we see fit? Or is this going to be held in this district specifically?
Those funds are held by the city. They're really meant to be a deterrent. You got to really want a liquor license if you're willing to pay $30,000. That goes to the city's coffers. No other license has as high a price tag.
Right.
So you really have to want that. So it may, you may be shoehorning the word premier into that through that very requirement there.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Could you explain that a little further than if that's the price tag? We don't actually get $30,000, $60,000 from the state, do we?
No, that is paid by the establishment.
So it's like an earmark thing in a sense. I mean, because you made it sound like we're getting $60,000 and then we get built, or we sell it, the license, and then we turn around and give it back to the state.
No.
That's kind of like, we sell the license for $30,000 to whoever wants to build something to get a liquor license?
That's what the city attorney knows a little more than I do, so I would let her go.
I mean, it's technical, I guess, only because I don't want the citizens to think that we just got $60,000 cash and we're going to do something with it.
The license fee in this case is set by state statute. The state statute requires us to charge that $30,000 fee.
Yep.
So it is, it's just, it's a license fee, as Mr. Roloff indicated. I think it's a deterrent to issuing it for, it's for very serious development. You're not going to pay $30,000 for a license without serious development behind it.
And that's because we've met our cap that the state has given us for the amount of liquor licenses that we have available?
That's not a requirement in this case. It's just an unusual situation.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if we're, that we would have three or, let's just say three or four licenses available for people to apply for. We just want to make sure that maybe down the line, future economic development in that area, if we don't have a license available, it won't stop the project if they're willing to pay $30,000 for it.
Yeah, they'll be willing to do it. A few years ago, and I'll bring this up, a few years ago, new licenses, not ones that turn over because somebody goes out of business or something, but new licenses, there was a requirement that they went up to what, $10,000, Pam?
Correct, reserved.
And there was, they were called reserve licenses, and part of the idea behind that was to discourage people from doing it. And there's some communities were talking about giving a rebate to those people because everybody else pays 500 annually for their license. $500 versus 10,000. And there was talk about making incentives. They don't want us to give incentives to give it back. They want to make this a, not necessarily a deterrent, but you've got to be really committed to being successful. And so they're not just going to be spend $30,000 idly, they're going to be doing it for an active reason. So it would likely be that the licenses would be used up because we would probably look to exhaust all of our existing licenses before we went to that because that would be a pretty high-end price tag to pay for a liquor license.
So that being said, and I'll yield to Mr. Pack after this question, that being said then, we're not reusing it as an economic development tool per se because of the high cost that it may be, but if they inquire about a liquor license and we're all out, we could say, well, we're premier economic in that area. You can have one, but it's going to cost you an extra $30,000.
The way that I think it's intended, I'll give you just the quick history. This economic development district got created for Lambo Field, for the Lambo... Titletown. The Titletown District. They needed, because a lot of that's in the village of Ashwabanam, they were out of liquor licenses. So the idea is, you got to be high-end, you got to be committed because you got to be willing to spend $30,000 for a liquor license. So, yeah, I think it'll force it to be a higher end because somebody just putting together a small mom and pop corner bar is not going to be motivated to do it because that 30, you got to pay for that $30,000 right away, and that's going to take a lot. You're going to need a pretty substantial higher end like Kohler, and I'm not suggesting we're going to be competing with the Titletown District, but the state's made it available for us if we want to make that available for somebody to raise the, I hate to use the term, raise the bar on the standard, well, then we'll have that tool available to us.
And if, let's say, the statute did pay the $30,000 and didn't make it, the license stays in that district. It doesn't, we can't use it somewhere else, right?
Correct, it cannot walk.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Pack.
Just one question for clarification. Is that $30,000, is that annual or is that a one-time?
That's a one-time.
And then there's an annual fee that...
Yeah, if they were to turn it back and somebody else wanted it, I believe the statute probably would require it to be another $30,000 payment, but that's not an annual payment.
But then they would stay in the renewal of $500 every year then?
I'm pretty sure that's what it works.
Yeah, and then to, I think that that addresses Ms. Paul Mary's questions about, as you indicated, Mr. Roloff, if you got a pony up 30K right up front, you're going to be making a significant investment into a property, and you're going to be looking to get a return on that investment, so.
Well, I think it almost begs the question, this will be a higher end. It almost says hotel, dining rooms, bars. It's not, someone said a mom and pop. This is a, someone making a major investment in a property in the city.
Top golf.
I see no other lights. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Create 7.
Next, we have ordinance 18-47, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district in Perin SMU, closed Perin's, to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay, Perin's SMU-PD, closed Perin's, 2130 through 2150, South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone register?
I have no one.
All right, bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
And for those who are not exactly sure where this is in South Washburn, that is the Fox Travel Facility on the south side of Washburn. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make just a general comment. I support this, obviously. Just pleased with the addition and the upgrades of reuse of a facility. It was a car dealership at one time, and I think it was, I forget what else was all in there. I think Oshkosh Corp. was in there at one time also. So I just want to applaud the folks from Rivera Ventures for approving the building and making it a very nice addition to the city of Oshkosh.
And not to mention that Fox World Travel originally resided in the, what is now one of the Atomic Cats...
Yes.
Buildings, and it only took up about a half of that. So when you think of, that's some serious growth within our community.
Homegrown growth.
Yes.
All right. Pam, would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Create 7.
We now have three new ordinances, none of which will have any formal action taken on them at this meeting. The first is ordinance 18-48, modify parking regulations on 11th Avenue. Pam, no one signed up for this?
I have no one.
So we have ordinance 18-49, repeal ordinance pertaining to prohibited areas for animals.
No one.
Councilmember Palmary.
Yeah, I just had a question on this. Maybe Ms. Lawrenson or Ms. Power can answer. So when we did that, is this relating to the dogs in the park? Yes?
It is.
Didn't we do ever just like a year pilot? I thought, maybe I'm misspaking.
You're right, it was a year pilot.
Was it a year pilot for the year? The reason we brought this is, this is actually inconsistent with that Chapter 19 change, so because we had two sections of the code inconsistent, we're just putting it in one section so we don't have to try and keep track of it in two places, so.
And I guess the reason I'm asking that is, because if we're coming up on that year, wouldn't we be like looking at whether or not we're going to make it permanent or not? So maybe this might be a little bit premature.
You're correct, we are coming up on the year, and I can't speak for the Parks Board and the Parks Department, but I would say the majority of the comments have been positive regarding the dogs in the parks. And I would expect once the advisory Parks Board takes a look at that, that they'll support leaving the ordinance in place for the dogs in parks.
Either way, I'm not sure. I would recommend you still don't have it in two separate places because trying to remember and keep it consistent is more of a challenge if you have it in two spots, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 18-50, amend ordinance authorizing public construction for certain classes of work. Pam?
I have no one.
Finally, we have ordinance 18-51, approve zone change from urban industrial in Perin UI, closed Perin to single-family residential nine district in Perin SR-9, 1603, 1607, and 1611, Ashland Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
I have no one.
Thank you. Moving on to new resolutions, the first is resolution 18-52, authorization of a committee to plan and organize a unity in community event sponsored by the city of Oshkosh. Pam, did anyone register?
I have no one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Palmary.
Mayor, would you just want to share a little bit about what that event is?
I will. It's something I have been working on in conjunction with some people at the university diversity coordinator, Dr. Sylvia Carrie Butler. Shee Smith has been involved in some of the meetings. This has been going on for well over a year, and we felt that there is a lot of diversity in the community, probably a little more observable at the university, but there is diversity in this community, I think more than any of us realize. So we talked and talked about an event. We finally decided it's time to put a group together, steering committee together. And the whole goal is to make this a very family-friendly event, to highlight the diversity and growing diversity in the community, the different cultures. We want to bring the community together to learn about the diversity here through a series of child-friendly and educational activities and entertainment and food. We all felt that everyone likes food and food is the, you're smiling, James. Everyone, we felt that is the best way to get people involved and with a heavy focus on children. The steering committee, we have people from the Hmong community, Native Americans, Muslims, African-Americans, people from the Philippines, and the group just keeps growing and growing. The more people hear about it, they come to our meeting type of thing. The school district is involved, they're working heavily on the whole educational aspect of it. But we also have a Japanese dance group coming and some groups from the Philippines. So it's just been growing, and we're finding out at every meeting, there's a lot more diversity in this community. For example, the school district, they have something like 50 languages they're dealing with. So the school district, the university's involved, the Chamber of Commerce, Oshkosh Corp., we even have the district attorney on the steering committee and a lot of other community members. I don't see, I see a few people who are from this, but it's reached a lot of enthusiasm
Last year, we tried out a new layout. This was not a good move for Sada Estates. I know some people thought it was great, but we had many complaints from people who tried to navigate around the mud. We lost a large area that was for handicap parking, and those people complained a lot to us because it was a long way for them to go, and we couldn't adjust it. We tried, but we couldn't adjust it. They had to park too far away. We were also not compliant with handicap guidelines. And years ago, we did not have ramps to a certain curb area, and we were threatened with a lawsuit. So, we've been very, very aware of the handicap issues. Years ago, we did not have ramps up to certain areas, but we've adjusted that. It is important to stay in tune with current handicap regulations. People in which wheelchairs had a great difficulty going across the grass and around the mud, and plus, we lost all that handicap area that they were parking in. So, that was very, a big thing for these people who had been coming to Sada Estates for probably forty years, or thirty years, or whatever. So, parents with strollers also were challenged because it was rough and uneven and so forth. And you can say, "Well, this is a festival." Okay, but we still have to abide by certain rules. So, what, you know? You can say, "It's okay. It's a festival." But that's not exactly how it happens. As you know, in the city, how many things happen that you don't think are gonna be. We lost several vendors who did not want to set up near the wet areas. Sales were down, which impacts our ability to pay our bills. I mean, this is important because we've had fees increase so much. And returning to our similar layout as we have had in the past with fencing would improve our chances of vendors returning and allowing the public to move around more easily. We would supply security, again, to the gates. And total security and safety worked out for us last year and provided good security. I wrote a note in here now. I can't read my own writing. Excuse me. Oh, by me moving. We will be able to expand the children's area. We tried moving it around and making it different to accommodate parents and so forth, but we had so many people say, "We didn't know where the children's area was." And so, by going back to where it was, we're gonna expand it, have more of an area that's just gentle to the children and their parents. And we do have, still have, the Nuneptis, optimists that are coming in to provide a children's area that's free. They can come in and do their projects and so forth. So, I just realized I lost an earring. That's not in the minutes, is it? One other important point is that we will be able to use the middle for parking, paid parking. Our fees keep going up, so we need to be thoughtful about.
We have to wrap it up, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking too slowly. We need to be thoughtful about our revenue areas. We are no longer able to use Pratt Trail on the Fourth of July, so that leaves us out. In good faith, we have invested over thirty-four thousand dollars toward the electrical infrastructure in the park, improvements that are used by all special events in the park. By returning to our previous layout, using that electric seat, we will also save money for the generation, generators we had to rent and the necessary fuel. The historical reenactment area will not return if they have to set up where they did last year. Only half of the presenters were there last year. We are also trying to incorporate more, more history by having the Menominee Indians provide some displays and possibly authentic food. One of the reenactors has a picture of his grandmother, or great-grandmother, at a Menominee Indian reunion at the Point, just past Menominee Park, which history was, it's very important to the park. We do have diversity. We have the Mexican area. So, the event is one of the main fundraisers for several veterans groups and other charitable organizations, churches who use the event to get it out, or put out their word. Sada Estates would like to provide families and the good people of Oshkosh's choice to come to a free community festival. We have donated to the zoo at various times when funds were available. I hope you will give us a chance to continue with this great event with cooperation, excuse me. Skipping around, we have the city council in the past. I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Palmary.
Yes, thank you, Ellen, for going over that. So, in looking at this, is Pratt Trail the one that is where you have shown on the layout, the bounce house and the balls, where Sabora Metico is going to also be? Is that, I'm sorry, I don't see Pratt Trail.
Pratt Trail? I have to know what you're talking about.
Well, you mentioned Pratt Trail or not being able to use Pratt Trail.
Yes, yes. It's interesting that the police department, a few years back, with meetings with them, requested that we have parking that was monitored. Well, we can't afford to just pay people to monitor the parking. So, we had paid parking, and anybody who wanted to come in and put their stuff out for a picnic or whatever was allowed to come in free. And so, we had a lot more parking available because somebody was there monitoring, and they parked, not parallel, but, you know, the other way.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate the fact that this is a multicultural event in that we do have, you know, the Hispanic area. We, there's the effort to involve more of the Native American Menominee tribe in this in terms of history and that. But I have to say, based on the phone calls and other input, and I love going to this event, it's one of the few opportunities that I get to hear multiple languages and Oshkosh in the background, and music, and food, and all of that. But the phone calls that we received, or at least I received last year regarding the music and the noise level, the requests here ask for an extension of the amplified sound beyond ten o'clock going up to eleven. And full disclosure, my mom lives over there, so after eleven, I got the phone call that the music was too loud. And we had numerous people from even further up into the Miller's Bay neighborhood, I think, up Hazel, as far as like Emeline Cook area, that were complaining about the music. And so, I've got some real challenges with requests for the extension of the amplified sound, as well as the exception to the sales of alcohol after nine P.M. So, I just have some concerns about those things.
This is my expert on the sound, and I think it has to do with the way we change.
I'm Thomas A. Gunther, Senior, 639 Grove Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. If I sound a little hoarse tonight, it's because I'm a communications specialist, and I did a lot of communicating today. So, I understand what you said about the noise complaints last year. It's because we were set up different. We had sound that was playing west, we had sound that was playing east. With the old layout, like we want to go back to, we don't have that. We have one stage that plays east towards the lake, and the other stage that plays south. So, that would cut back that, the sound going into the city. That would take care of that. I know, I live on Grove Street, and I'm a block from the park, and I sat on my porch, and I listened to the music at Rib Fest, and it was just like it was playing across the street, and I really enjoyed it. I don't think we're as loud as they were, but I know we get complaints, but a lot of people like to complain, the people that really liked the music and liked the festival, they don't call, they don't call in.
I think, if I recall, and I do recall, because I don't get a lot of calls around midnight, it was a bass. It wasn't just, you know, the music, it was bass that was, so it wasn't just the sound, it was that vibrational aspect, too.
The bass. See, bass is omnidirectional, and it just travels like that, where like the mids and the highs go in a direction. So, the bass is gonna travel, and that's because it was pointed towards the city. You point it the other way, it won't affect.
Thank you for sharing.
And the keys to this layout that we're proposing now is we have two beer gardens. We have the Mexican area, and we have the main stage area. Both areas will be completely secured with the eight-foot security chain link fence. So, the entryways and exitways will be monitored by our security people, so there'll be no carryouts, any alcohol will be able to go outside of those beer gardens. As far as east of the railroad bridge, where the reenactor section will be, there'll be no alcohol over there at all. There'll just be an area that we'll have for our reenacting, and if we do the Inians, if they do their community and set up, the Inians will be there. If that doesn't pan out for us, we'll bring in family things, you know, things for the families. There'll be completely a family area, no alcohol. We will have some soda, we will have some water, we'll have some alcohol over there, plus we'll have some porta potties over there. So, that infrastructure really helps what you're trying to do with the Fourth of July fireworks. That'll all be set up. But the fireworks is on Wednesday, so we open up on Tuesday, we'll do Saturday. So, with the fireworks on Wednesday, you have a rain date. If it rains, you're gonna have it on Thursday, so that works out really good for you. But the point is, with these two beer gardens completely isolated, and with our security making sure there's no alcohol going out of these areas, it's actually gonna be easier, I think, for the police department than what we had before, which was a large, a big, large area. But I don't think we've had any problems last year in our area. So, it's just getting back to the hard services, so we don't have to drive trucks on the grass. I mean, it rained like two and a half inches on our setup line, which created a mess. So, I think I can make this work for you guys, and I hope that you understand that we really want to move forward with this and can't do anything without your approval. I got sponsors ready to sign in the dotted line and send us checks, and I got fans ready to book and sign contracts. Nothing I can do until we get your blessing. I hope we get your blessing. Thank you.
I do have one question related to one of the photos, specifically, Will, related to the boat launch area. Will that be accessible to general public on?
Until we got approval today, I really can't move forward. So, I have talked to the person who owns the Midway, and I have suggested to him that could they possibly make it more accessible so that it's not such an issue? And he said, "Yes, they will work with us," but I can't go forward until I get your approval. And so, it's kind of a back and forth here.
You can stipulate that they, even without our, prior to our approval, you could stipulate to them that they've gotta leave the, I mean, I appreciate that, but...
He has already said to me that he will do whatever is necessary, so I don't know what more I can say about that thing. Please tell me what I can say. I would...
So, then, you're telling us that if we approve this tonight, that the public will have access to the boat landing?
Well, I can't say that it would be available all during the whole, you're asking an impossible question. I'm sorry. But when the festival, when our event is going on, there's certainly going to be more If you want me to try and make an arrangement with them to say that it will be accessible all the time, I can try, but I know what, I have spoken with our director, and he said, you know, "It doesn't matter, there's too much traffic," and I can't control that. If we don't have any traffic, we aren't gonna make any money, so I'm not sure what you're asking. Please.
I'm asking if the boat launch will be available to the public for the Fourth of July.
Councilman Peck, we have a video from a drone that we flew that shows them launching boats during our festival last year. So, yes, it would be available for launching.
Okay, that's all I needed, is just a simple yes answer. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I've forgotten what he had told me. I guess I'm...
All right.
I'm trying very hard to make this okay. I mean, forty-seven years we've been doing this, and, you know, all of a sudden, there's all these issues, and I'm trying very hard to answer all the questions. Thank you.
And then, just one last one, and I did look at the website last year. It did get cleaned up after it was mentioned multiple times, but the city does fund half of the fireworks, and I would expect that the city gets the same billing as festival food does related to this, because we are contributing, it is...
I think what we could do to even go beyond that is we could maybe do a special page for the fireworks.
However it's done, just so that it is...
I understand what you said. The way we had it ordered last year was brought to you by the City of Oshkosh. That was tagged on everything that we said about the fireworks. It was "Festival Food Fireworks Brought to You by the City of Oshkosh." That's how we worded it. I think that's the right way to word it.
Right. Well, that was asked, when, that was asked originally during the approval of the event, and it wasn't until significantly afterwards that we specifically called it out and said that it was not there, it was asked for at the same time.
You're correct, sir.
All right, then, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I appreciate what you do. I cannot imagine trying to organize the magnitude of this festival. I've been attending this since I was a kid. I bring my kids. You know, we don't have any issues.
That's fine.
I think it's a wise move to go back to the original setup. I think this new, or, you know, original setup makes more sense. I'm pleased to hear that you're taking additional steps to keep the areas secure. I think it looks great, and I support this. I will be there, you know, with my kids this year. But I did have a question for Ms. Snell. I could be wrong, but I had thought that we discussed putting some verbiage into our special assessment, or our special event fees, where if the ramps weren't going to be open to the public, then that event had to cover some of that cost.
Sure. So, there is a Parks Boat Launch buyout. We don't include that in extraordinary services costs when we do that on here, and they've been told what those are. It's a five hundred dollar per day boat buyout with the Parks Department. Park rentals and boat launch fees and all that stuff are assessed, actually, prior to the event taking place. And so, when we do the resolutions, we only do them with the extraordinary services costs that are anticipated, so they are informed that those would be additional costs outside of this estimate.
And they have not taken all those additional costs at this time?
They, I believe, have already talked to the Parks Department in regard to what would be, need to be reserved.
So, if they wanted to use the entire Midway, they could buy out the area for...
And they have, and they do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Pam, is anyone else who signed up to speak?
I have no one.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second discussion. Deputy Mayor Ha.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to the, I guess would be the resolution under E and F, under the exceptions, that we modify the kind of rise in other activities sooner than ten-thirty. That kind of addresses Councilmember Palmary's concerns about the noise, especially being across from two senior citizen housing complexes. I, too, have heard the complaints, and I live within blocks of Menominee Park. And then, also under F, since we're making, if the amendment goes through, making the adjustment that we would back up the alcohol sales to ten P.M.
Second.
Instead of ten-thirty. It's a multiple-day event, and I think that with four days of the music and four days of the alcohol sales and everything, that a half-hour difference on each end shouldn't affect proceeds to that much of an amount.
Pam, did we vote on the amendments, or just the...
The amendment first, and then the resolution with the changes.
Okay, so, there's a motion in a second for the amendments. Could you repeat them so we all in sync on the time?
E was going to be reduced or brought back to ten-thirty, and F was the same. No, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock was F.
We have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade six-one.
Now, we'll vote on the resolution with the amendments. So, we need a motion, no, we don't need a motion, a second. So, would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade seven.
Now, to Resolution eighteen-five-four, approve lead service line replacement policy. And I would also like, would we like... Could you please hold your discussions outside? Should we discuss both eighteen-fifty-four and eighteen-fifty-five at the same time? They're somewhat related?
They are somewhat related, yes.
So, first is Resolution eighteen-five-four, approve lead service line replacement policy. Pam, has anyone signed up to speak to this?
I do not have anybody registered for thirty-three or thirty-four.
And I'll also read Resolution eighteen-five-five, approve amendment to twenty-eighteen operating budget lead service line replacement program, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Anyone sign up?
No one.
All right, so, I'll need a motion. We can discuss them, I think, together, separate motions and votes. Resolution eighteen-fifty-four, do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of eighteen-fifty-four.
Discussion.
Second.
And then, can we, Pam, can we put the other one on the floor at the same time, so as they're both related?
I would rather not.
All right. Then, I would defer to Mr. Robbie.
Thank you. This policy is really forming a final policy of adapting from the pilot policy that was approved by the council in two thousand seventeen. As the council may recall, earlier in two thousand seventeen, there were some changes to Chapter Twenty of the municipal code as it relates to lead services. The city subsequently applied for and received a principal forgiveness loan from the DNR through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. The two thousand seventeen principal forgiveness loan amount, or grant, essentially, was five-hundred-thousand dollars. We started with the pilot program so we could kind of learn some things about how this type of a program could function for us. So, in two thousand seventeen, the only properties that were eligible for reimbursement through the program and through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Funds were those that were adjacent to a city, either street reconstruction project or water main replacement project, or those that suffered a failure or a leak on a service, either on the public or private side. The change in the municipal code required that within six months of either side replacing a lead service, the other side must replace theirs as well. So, if a leak occurs on either the public or the private side, the other has six months to get their side replaced. So, residents that did experience a failure in their lead service lines were also eligible for reimbursement through the program. The main difference in the policy at this point versus the pilot program policy that was previously approved is we are now opening up the policy to include requests. So, it is no longer a requirement that you be adjacent to a city street reconstruction project or adjacent to one of our water main projects or have a failure. You can request to have your service be replaced as a part of this program. For example, for many years, on the street reconstruction projects, the city was replacing the public side of the water service. So, if it was lead, we were replacing it with copper. However, after the curb stop, we were just reconnecting back to the private lead service. So, this would allow those property owners to get theirs replaced, or any other property owner, whether or not the public side has been done. So, that is the biggest key change to the policy. I do want to reiterate, the financial reimbursement of fifty percent up to a maximum of fifteen-hundred dollars remains in place. There is also language in the policy that was retained as far as additional reimbursements for individuals meeting low to moderate income requirements. Specifically, those that are at or below eighty percent of the median income, as published by the United States Department of Housing, are eligible for up to seventy-five percent reduction with no cap. Those that are at or below fifty percent of the median income are eligible for a hundred percent reimbursement. So, basically, in that case, we would write a two-party check to the homeowner and the contractor, plumber that is doing the work.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? Would you please take the roll on Resolution eighteen-five-four?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade seven.
Resolution eighteen-five-five, approve amendments to twenty-eighteen operating budget lead service line replacement program, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Pam, no one?
I have no one registered.
Back to the council for a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Please take the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade seven.
Resolution eighteen-five-six, approve change order number one for Public Works Contract Number Seventeen-O-three, Mary Jewell Lift Station and Park Shelter, one-hundred-and-twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Anyone, Pam, yes?
I have no one registered.
Back to the council for motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Pansky.
I was not in support of this when it was first brought to the council, and I will not be supporting this one or the next resolution. I just, it's hard for me to support architectural enhancements to the tune of almost a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of taxpayer money. Thank you.
I see anyone else. Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a comment, I supported it the last time, but I do think that the, and I know it's in this new district, that Business Park area, that we talked about upping the standards and things, but I do think that in the future, the plan can issue, who does not pass the budget, who does not have the voter's ear, in a sense, needs to be conscientious that as much as we want to improve those standards, and that's a good thing, that there is an economic downfall to that, and it's gonna raise the utility rates to cover that type of stuff. So, I do think that they need to be conscientious as they discuss that at their meetings, that there is a, you know, financial side to this that the council has to consider, to the taxpayers back home in the community. But I do support it because of where it is and what it can do to enhance, and we have to lead also by example at times, and this is one of them where I think we need to lead a little bit by example, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmary.
So, this was kind of, this was, you know, it's not a big, huge deal, except for the
fact that it's got a reasonable price tag on here for a very subtle, I guess, design enhancement. I keep thinking about the fact that this is a bathroom and a pump station, and we're adding dormers to make it look like a house. And I just have a little bit of a, I guess, heartburn over that. And it's, to me, not a huge difference in terms of the way that the two images were presented. And while I can appreciate that we do want to have decent design, you know, the folks that I heard from just weren't a fan of spending $140,000, and that includes, like, additional changes to the plans, which required another $20,000 from another subcontractor. And it just kind of set up this domino effect, so I won't be supporting this.
I just want to remind the council that ever since we built the lift station across from Webster Stand, we've received nothing but complaints about the square, ugly building on the waterfront. And yes, we are insisting others in the community raise their standards architecturally, and we have to lead by example if we're asking others, developers primarily, to raise their standards. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody that's commented on this issue is correct. Ms. Palmieri is correct. Mr. Herman is correct. Supporting it is also correct. I will be supporting it because to the mayor's point, having something like this located across from a residential area, this also too does have a residential area. So while I have had some concerns regarding the expense, I have also had support to have it kind of blend in more with the area around it and the homes around it versus looking so commercial, industrial, government-like. So I will support it.
Councilmember Pansky.
Mr. Robbie, just a question regarding that lift station across from Webster. Have we had any failures or any issues with its sole purpose of being a lift station?
No, we have not.
Thank you.
Could you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
No.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 4-3.
Resolution 18-57. Approve amendment to engineering service agreement for design and bidding support services for Mary Jewell sanitary lift station, AECOM Technical Services Inc., $21,750. Anyone sign up?
No one has signed up.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Crowsey?
No.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
No.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 4-3.
Resolution, these are new resolutions. The first, we'll continue with Resolution 18-58. Approve engineering service agreement for updating the design and bidding documents and providing bidding assistance and construction monitoring and documentation services for the Libby Nicoli Watershed North Main Street Area Attention Basin, AECOM Technical Services Inc., $290,402.45. Pam?
I have no one registered.
Back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Resolution 18-59. Aye. Aye.
Grade 7.
I promise to get us out of here on a reasonable hour tonight. Resolution 18-59. Approve tax increment district number 34, project plan designate tax increment district number 34, boundaries create tax increment district number 34, Oshkosh Corporation Global Headquarters. Plan Commission recommends approval. Has anyone signed up to speak to this new resolution?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, Mr. Taves has driven all the way up here, so we got to bring him up. Obviously, council has been involved in this for quite a while, but could you and Mr. Burge kind of give an overview of what we're doing, benefit to the community and?
Certainly. So we're creating two different tax increment districts, but it's really more or less the same project associated with the new global headquarters, Oshkosh Truck. So the first of two districts is going to be an industrial district. So even though we think of a global headquarters as really being a more, an office park type use, it does qualify as industrial under the TIF law. So this district will be a single parcel that will consist of a portion of the Lakeshore Golf Course where the headquarters facility will be located. And the principal project cost within the district is a development incentive that will be paid to Oshkosh Truck over the life of the district. It's got two different components, and really, the district is limited to that scope in terms of the project costs, along with some administrative expense and then a possible reimbursement of certain expenses that the city is going to incur on the front end for a portion of the infrastructure that is needed to serve the project. So the TIP plan is designed to be consistent with the development agreement that's being prepared for the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this first of two tax increment districts.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmieri.
Actually, if I could ask Darren about this one. First of all, I just want to say that the project plan and the documentation that came forth on both of these, awesome. But I do have a question, just for clarification. Some folks have been concerned about the conversion to the industrial, whether or not that would allow for any kind of true industrial should, for some unforeseeable reason, Oshkosh Corporation did not end up having an office park there, I don't know, years from now, that it could not then also revert to some form of industrial truck-type storage? Just want to get that off the table and out of people's minds.
No, that would be, no. The new zoning that we created for it with Corporate Business Park would not allow that. The only industrial connection we really have is a light industrial, is a light industrial use. Light industrial uses are generally those that are located fabrication inside. It's generally things where people can go to a place and maybe pick something up. So the trucks, anything like that, manufacturer of trucks, the zone is not set up to permit these.
Nor storage.
Nor storage, correct. Correct. And I think we specifically put outdoor display was a prohibited use in that district.
Thank you.
Which would bring in storage too.
I see no other one, anyone wishing to speak? Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Present.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 6-1, present.
Resolution 18-60. Approve tax increment district number 35, project plan designate tax increment district number 35, boundaries create tax increment district number 35, Oshkosh Avenue Corridor. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone sign up?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Burge, Mr. Taves, you might want to just explain.
We have rules about buttons.
Mic's on. What difference does it? Just could you give us the background on this as well? I know that it's tied to it, but it was distinctly set up this way for a particular reason.
Right. And the reason to have a second district is, as we just discussed, we have an industrial type use, but the industrial use is not obviously what you expect or are looking to promote along the Oshkosh Avenue corridor. So this separate district is being created on the basis that at least 50% of the properties within that corridor are in need of conservation or rehabilitation. So in other words, we're really focusing this district's activities on redevelopment. And one thing that's notable about this project or this particular tax increment district is that unlike recent districts which the city's created where the focus was really a direct incentive to developers, there are no direct development incentives within this project plan other than the ability to provide for some facade renovations, things of that nature, and a program to be developed in the future. So the incentive here is really the upgraded infrastructure that the city is intending to put in place, which does two things. One is it provides the connections that will be necessary for the other TIP and the Oshkosh headquarters, but also enables a higher level of redevelopment to occur throughout the corridor. So this district's project costs include basically all of the infrastructure that's needed in the corridor and the redevelopment that's expected to occur as a result of that infrastructure, as well as obviously the location of Oshkosh Truck's headquarters is expected then to allow the city to recover that investment that it is going to have to make on the front end to pay for those infrastructure enhancements.
Thank you.
I see no other one wishing to address this resolution, so would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 7.
Resolution 18-61. Approve covenants for the Oshkosh Aviation Business Park. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 7.
Resolution 18-62. Approve specific implementation plan for 2130 through 2150, South Washburn Street. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Grade 7.
That says Resolution 18-63. Approve city manager performance evaluation for 2017 and 2018 compensation. Pam?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I thank Mr. Beck. I think he did a great job of kind of encompassing what council's feelings were. We had a nice discussion on the phone and that. But I do think it's important for our citizens to actually hear us read our feedback and even the goals, because I think this year, the goals are very important to the future of the city of Oshkosh. So I'm just going to read back, read briefly the city manager council feedback for the year 2017. If any council members wish to make any comments after that, please do, and then I'll move into the goals briefly. City manager continues to work hard for the city and its citizens. He continues to remain focused on both details and the strategic plan for the city. 2017 was a challenging year for the city manager and staff. The year started out with the Arena Project followed up by the Oshkosh Corp. Project, the Transload Facility. He demonstrated the ability to continue to move forward with the work on these projects, yet keeping the strategic priorities and the visions of the city while making sure that he and staff provide the needed services to the city and its citizens. The council understands 2017 saw significant challenges with the budget and levy restraints imposed on the city by the state budget. Yet with diligent work by Mr. Roloff, Finance Director Larson and staff, the city was able to approve a balanced budget, added police officer, add a fire lieutenant and a firefighter, along with a human resource generalist to its staff. The city continues to improve its streets and storm sewer issues, plus we've added several significant TIPS this past year to help improve the city of Oshkosh's infrastructure. The council understands will be many challenges ahead, but we are confident in the city manager's ability to continue to deal with these issues, working with staff to make some minor adjustments in policy and procedural areas. The council has confidence in Mr. Roloff to continue to move the city of Oshkosh forward and will continue to make Oshkosh competitive in northeast Wisconsin and continue to make Oshkosh a great place to live, work, and play. The Oshkosh City Council has approved the 2.5% pay raise retroactive first of the year for 2018, bringing his salary to $148,625. There'll be no changes in the city manager's benefit package. The city manager's contract will be retroactive to January 1st, 2018. Seeing no one pushing their buttons? I will move on to the city manager's goals for 2018. In the past, we've tied some financial incentives to the goals. We have not done that. One last thing before I go into goals. Last year, the council had approved an incentive package for Mr. Roloff to stay as the city manager for every year, for five years. If he stays as the city manager, council had approved the $5,000 would go into a savings account. At the end of the five years, Mr. Roloff is still the city manager, and has a satisfactory valuation, he would be eligible to receive that one-time $25,000. There's no interest, there's no other incentive package to that other than the cash value.
Just one small correction. That is, it is a, that is a retention package. In other words, no different than many corporations put in place to keep their top talent. So we're basically incenting Mr. Roloff to stay with the city of Oshkosh instead of looking to other areas or other communities, because it's just too much fun here, isn't it, Mark?
Having a great time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, on this 2018 city manager goals, council wants a comprehensive look at city-owned facilities for the long term. Will our current facilities meet the city's needs five, 10, 15 years from now? If not, what process or plans will need to be implemented for the future building needs of the city? This partial goal from last year, council didn't quite feel it got addressed the way we'd like it to. It's looking at our facilities. Currently, are they helping? Okay, but will they meet our needs, as I said, five, 10, 15 years down the line, or will we have to build a new city hall or some other facilities? We know the Parks Board needs something, so it's all kind of, all of that with our facilities. Number two goal would be work with the chiefs of the Fire Department and the Police Department to put a plan in place for the next five budget cycles to add personnel to their departments as their needs arise to be implemented in future budgets to assist the council in decision-making on staff needs. And there's an asterisk to it. It may make sense to look at staffing levels throughout the organization to see if there are areas that could be cut or areas that may need to expand due to lack of personnel. The third goal is to work with staff to do a current inventory of the city-owned industrial development and business park land. What is the status of the land? Is it shovel-ready? How many total sites do we have? Then work with staff, GOEDC, realtors, and the Chamber of Commerce to develop an aggressive marketing plan to bring more companies and to work on business expansion. And the fourth and final goal is to work with staff to update our current housing stock and the assessment of that stock. Identify areas of the city for neighborhood revitalization, meaning are there blocks we should be buying, rehabbing a block, or if need be, completely turn down what needs to be done to develop that area. be done to develop that area. Then work with staff to put an RFP together to complete these, this project. As a whole, council wants to see an aggressive package to improve single-family housing in Oshkosh. And the, kind of the reasoning behind that is, as you, we've talked about with the work of GOEDC and the Chamber and the expansion of our businesses and with Oshkosh's global headquarters, we need places for people to live. And we think right now, currently, there's areas of the city that could be expanded, there's areas of the city that could be rehabbed. We have several programs in place for that, and we want to see more of that in the city of Oshkosh. So that when people want to move to Oshkosh, there's good housing stock for them, there's good places for them to move. We have a vibrant school district, a very good school district. We have a great university, a great two-year university. We're within minutes of other communities and other educational opportunities. So, we think it's important that we focus on our housing stock as, as much as our industrial stock. So, those are the goals we put together for Mr. Roloff. Council has any comments or please weigh in. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Deputy Mayor Herman. This is a lot of work. That's one of the major key roles of a deputy mayor is putting together review of the city manager. I've done it, Peck has done it, Deb has done it. It's, it's very time-consuming. You've done a great job again, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, just a couple of brief comments. First of all, certainly, Mr. Roloff's position is very unique in that typically a person, when they have somebody to report to, it's usually one, and they adapt to that one personality. Mr. Roloff has a unique situation in which he has seven very different personalities in which, in which he must accommodate and try to meet the needs of. And I think to Deputy Mayor Herman's point, this year was certainly unique with a lot of different challenges this year, various opinions on council, and I think Mark did a very, very nice job of trying to navigate through the seven of us. Second of all, also to say too, having done Mr. Roloff's review twice, I think Deputy Herman, this is your third time. And again, you know, we did a mid-year review, we did now the annual review, and I would like to say thank you for your time and effort and dedication to making sure that you take all seven of our individual comments into place and doing a nice job with, with the evaluation.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Paul Mary?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Herman for guiding us through that process, and thank you, Mr. Roloff, for your patience. I guess, just wanting to make sure that you're okay with those goals, and I'm sure we'll have further discussions on that.
Well, thank you. All the goals that the council has set out are really laid out in our strategic plan. So, you're just getting a little targeted with those, and that's great, that's going to be a good direction for the staff, and I appreciate that. We'll probably be coming back to you with questions to get clarifications, and Deputy Mayor Herman and I discussed those, and we're already working on a few of those, because as we were going through the year, these were, you know, these were coming up on the radar screen, particularly the public safety issues that came up during the budget and the facilities, as we were doing some with parks. Staff's already working on some, some things that you'll be seeing in the coming weeks on that. And the other two are also consistent with our industrial and economic development goals, so I feel confident we can get those things done as long as I get over this cold, and I try not to talk tonight. So, thank you for the vote of support, and look forward to keep working with you. And as far as dealing with the family, I had a family of seven, so I'm quite comfortable with working with seven bosses, because I had that many bossing me around the house, so I'm quite used to it, and I'll look forward to that.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Herman, I know you've heard it earlier from my other colleagues, but no, thank you very much. I've been through this once myself. It is a time-consuming process.
Thank you.
Your work is greatly appreciated. Mr. Roloff, I know that many knots were pounded upon your head this year. Twenty seventeen was a difficult year for the city of Oshkosh with some of the things that have happened, but at the end of the day, twenty seventeen was a very positive year for the city of Oshkosh. So, thank you for your perseverance, for your professionalism, and I look forward to working with you in the, in the coming year. And yes, it is true that you have seven different bosses, all of us with seven different ideas, and that we pull you seven different ways, but as I said, professionalism, perseverance, and your positive attitude are wonderful, and the city is much better for it.
Let's make that final by taking the roll.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Rosie?
Aye.
Peck?
No, I mean, aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Period seven.
Now, we're at council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. The first is joint workshop with the Traffic Review Board and Plan Commission to discuss Oshkosh Avenue Traffic Impact Study on January thirtieth. Have we changed the time?
No, that's five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
That was the, the one that got changed is the next one. That got moved to six at the request of the School Board, but this is five-thirty. We think we can knock it out in an hour and a half. The idea is to have about a half-hour presentation. If questions are weaved into that, it may go a little longer, but the idea is that we can cover all the ground that we have. Council will be receiving a copy of the report, I believe, before the end of the week. Is that correct, Mr. Davis? Yeah, so you'll, you'll be getting a draft copy of the report that lays out the different corridors, intersections, things like that. I had a chance to look at it, and I think it's going to be very, a lot of different options and a lot of different considerations, so, in getting your direction on where we go with that. Probably the next step would be a little more public input, even though things like Sawyer Street probably take a long time before we actually implement it. There's nothing wrong with having that at least out there on the table so people can see it. So, look for that in your Friday packet.
We're meeting over there?
We're gonna meet in four oh four, yes. It'll, we'll work it, because it may not be the same setup, because we're going to have the council and two boards and commissions, roughly twenty people if everybody shows up. So, you'll have to bear with us as we're working on the format for that room.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Just one comment. Mr. Roloff, is that going to be available electronically, that study?
Yes, because the draft I got was electronic. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be electronically.
I will be leaving Oshkosh tomorrow, not coming back until five o'clock on Tuesday. I have a snowmobile trip planned, and it's supposed to be going through Thursdays, I'm making adjustments, but I will have access to my computer, so.
We'll make sure we get you.
Yeah. And if you want to put a note down now, no council packet on Friday.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Next, we have a joint meeting with the Oshkosh Area School Board on January thirty-first, beginning at six PM at City Hall, right here in room four oh four.
Mr. Mayor, we gave a draft agenda, just the items that council members have been giving us. If there's any additions or subtractions from that, please let us know. And we'll also look at, it sounds like I got some feedback from some council members about scheduling, making sure we get our future meetings done, because as much as our great intentions are, they fall off the wayside. So, I know there were some questions about, let's make sure we schedule the next one during that, and so we're, we're looking at some dates to throw out there.
I think we've talked quarterly meetings. Every time we meet, you're right, then we forget about it, so.
Yeah. So, the, the items, student transportation, the requests from the Esther Group, Carl Trager School, the driveway access, transportation development plan, town surveys, civic engagement surveying services, we thought we'd talk about that with the district, recognition of MLK Day as a holiday from Councilmember Pansky, and the School Liaison Officer Program, Councilmember Paul Mary. So, those are the items. If, I think it's just kind of open-ended to talk about those things, and if there's anything else you want to add, or if you want to modify or subtract it, let me know.
Okay. Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, when these dates had come up previously, I had mentioned that I was committed both evenings. One of them, I am actually out of town, and the other one, I do have a work commitment. I did let Stephanie Carlin know from the Oshkosh School Board that I, over the course of the weekend, not to expect me at the meeting.
All right, Councilman Peck?
I will, I had already also mentioned that I will not be at the, the School Board joint meeting. I had a game get canceled earlier in the year that has been rescheduled, so I have to cover that. And then there's a possibility I may not be there on Monday night, as there is another referee down, and we are in the process of, or Tuesday night, so the thirtieth and the thirty-first. Thirty-first definitely no, the thirtieth possibly, as we're scrambling to fill some open spots due to some injuries.
All right, Councilperson Paul Mary?
Yes, two things. First of all, is this going to be televised, or will we have minutes?
These will be televised.
Okay.
And the report is really the.
And then on Oshkosh Media for replay, for those who might miss it?
Yep, and yeah, you can call it on the website.
And then the other thing I would actually look at possibly subtracting is possibly moving the School Liaison Officer Program off to the next quarterly meeting.
Okay.
To give adequate time to these other items.
Very good. Thank you.
Excuse me. Access a bid request to remove special unfees for the farmer's market.
Flip a coin?
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been approached by the vice chair of the bid. They're interested in sponsoring the Saturday's farmer market, or the summer farmer's market, as a bid-sponsored entity. And looking at our special event policy, I think by the bid taking it over and the bid being an arm of the city of Oshkosh, it meets our current ordinances, ordinance on special events, and I would recommend that we don't charge. If the bid, if the bid agrees to take over that ownership, that we do not charge for any extraordinary services. As Mr. Roloff pointed out earlier in the meeting, and that the criteria is special events, benefit, quality of life to the city of Oshkosh, we all know that, we got thousands of emails on it. It's a benefit to the city, it's a benefit to the bid in the downtown area. It's a tradition now, and Oshkosh has been for a long time, and since it moved from the City Hall parking lot to downtown Oshkosh, it's expanded, it's become a, an event that a lot of people attend, a lot of our citizens attend, and it actually doesn't, has very few city services provided. Barricades, signs, we're not talking a lot of money here. And where the bid is, like I said, a part of the city through the taxing entity, I think it makes sense that we accept their requests to take over the farmer's market, and we waive any special event fees connected to it.
Mr. Roloff?
Mr. Herman, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Chris Larson, who's on the bid board, and the sponsorship, it doesn't necessarily mean that they are going to be running the event, the farmer's market, because the farmer's market does several events. They do the downtown farmer's market, they also do the winter, as well as the one in South Park, and the bid's interest, obviously, is just downtown.
Right.
What they've indicated to me, because we've had discussions over the years, as you well know, about the parking utility, and I think what they're willing to do is to maybe commit long-term to funding the, the parking as a kind of a gesture towards council waiving the fees. So, that's, the fees are estimated to be nine thousand. In the past, they've been more like three thousand. It's the equipment rates, I think, that are kicking up a good part of that for the following year. So, it just gives you a range of what the dollar amount that, that you'd be looking at.
And if I could just follow.
Mr. Peck?
I'll defer to Mr. Herman, as he had the floor, so.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Just to follow Mr. Roloff's comments, and those of us that have served on the parking utility, we all know the bid is not mandated to help offset the cost of the parking utility. But yet, at the same time, the bid benefits from not having parking on Main Street and the parking lots behind ninety percent of their businesses. And the other unique thing with this is, is the fact that the farmer's market is completely in the bid district.
Councilman Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions related to this, and I'm looking for the ordinance that we were looking at, but there were several things that were cited in the, the community, the unity community event, and I'm pulling these up right now. I fully, I like, I support the farmer's market. I think it's great for our community. My concern is the precedent that this sets. Special event, financial benefit to the city as a whole, I found these things. Special event is of interest to a smaller segment of the city's population, which the city seeks to incur. The tradition of the event in the city, cultural and or historical significance of the special event, whether or not the special event provides services or functions that are traditionally organized or sponsored by other cities or governments, whether or not the special event organizers are making good faith efforts to minimize adverse effects on the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and as a result, minimizing the need for city employee involvement. The effect of the special events on the neighborhoods surrounding the site of the event, the financial burden the special event places on the city's taxpayers as a whole, the financial condition of the events organizers. All right. There are many organizations within our community, and we actually had one here tonight, that they talk about all of the good that they've brought to the community, that they've provided, you know, benefits to the city. Many of the nonprofits that's, that have special events meet the requirement of minimizing adverse effects on the health, safety, and welfare of the community. All of the events that support local nonprofits, that support the Salvation Army, the Oshkosh YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. I just want to throw it out there, that while, again, the farmer's market is very good, and I'm not against it, but I'm throwing this out for some food for thought, what is going, is when we, we will begin seeing people coming in and saying, hey, I meet, and Mr. Roloff even indicated, it doesn't have to be to meet all ten. If we can check a few boxes off, you can make the argument that we should waive the special event fee. Again, I'm not taking a position tonight, one way or the other. I'm throwing it out there for everyone to consider, because I can guarantee you that should we decide to waive this, that there will be people coming forward saying, hey, I meet many of these criteria, so therefore, I think you should waive my special event We got to think about that.
Councilmember Paul Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I do want to ask a question of either Councilmember Herman or, or Mr. Roloff. Do we have a letter from the farmer's market board in support of the bid taking management of this, or is that forthcoming?
We currently do not have, have that. It's, it's really been a, Chris Larson, who's the vice chair of the bid board, and Megan Lane, the chair of the board, coming forward, saying that they, they're, the bid board voted to take, take the farmer's market, I guess you could say, as an event that they would co-sponsor. They're not going to, like, like you said, they're not going to run it. The bid board's going to, you know, the, the farmer's market's going to stay independent, they're going to have their own boss, they're going to pay their own, you know, their own insurance, all those types of things that they've been doing in the past. It's just that the bid board sees the benefit of the event in the bid district and would like to support it as much as possible. By doing that, they feel that it's in the best interest of the city to waive the fees.
Right, right, and I appreciate that. I just, I, I hope that it's.
And, and, and just one little far, if council does not, would prefer to have it as a resolution, we could do that, and the bid would then come in and pitch their, just like any other event that Mr., like Mr. Councilmember Peck is concerned about. You know, because council does have the authority under the ordinance to do this. Without a resolution, without, you know, we can, we can, we can make that decision because the ordinance allows us to do that.
And I, I just wanted to ask that question, and then I just want to finish with these comments, and that is, you know, I can appreciate Councilmember Peck's comments in terms of this opening up to others, however, you know, of those criteria that we have listed, I, I feel that it's important to consider the fact that this is not a one-time event, or a couple of weekends, or a week-long thing. This is twenty-two weeks out of the year, which makes it somewhat exceptional and unique. They do have a significant distribution and matching. This is an opportunity for people who benefit from the Food Share Program to receive matching dollars towards fresh foods. In a food dessert, I might point out, it gives micro-preneurial opportunities for people who are starting small businesses, which, who knows? You never know if that little business starting out at the farmer's market could end up being, okay, it might be a stretch, an Oshkosh corporation, but. And then the social capital that it builds because of that continuity and because of those twenty-two weeks. So, I just would like to share that, and, and I hope that we'll all be able to discuss it from that lens. So I just would like to share that, and I hope that we'll all be able to discuss it from that lens.
Just one comment, so we all understand the bid is offering to pay the special event fees, but they are not going to be running the event at all. They're not going to be there.
No, no. No. They're not going to run the event. They're requesting to have the fees waived. So Farmer's Market would not pay any special event fees.
I'm a little confused.
Okay. I've heard support and sponsor this evening. And now I just heard waiving the fees. What are we asking for? Are they going to support? To me, support and/or sponsor says coverage of fees. Waiving of fees is just that, a waiver of the fees. What is the bid willing to do? If the bid is willing to support, sponsor, that means financial commitment, sponsorship. Are they asking to waive? What is?
As, I'll just go back. As it says on C, bid request to waive special event fees for Farmer's Market. The bid feels that over the years, that even though they, for their chalk walk and some of those other things, they did not actually have to pay the special event fees because of being an arm of the city under a taxing entity being a bid. So they look at, they haven't pushed that issue, but they're basically willing to bring the Farmer's Market under as an event of the bid board, but run by the Farmer's Market. And they would, they're requesting to have the fees waived.
Mr. Roloff.
Just a point of clarification. Councilmember Palmary asked if there was a request made by the bid, or by the Farmer's Market for this specific thing. And the answer was no, as Mr. Herman pointed out. They did send a letter requesting a fee waiver yet again, even though the council had recently said no to that request. And I think informally, the bid and the Farmer's Market group have had some active discussions. And so this is being done with their full knowledge and consent, I would say. Even though we don't have a letter specifically to the effect that you cited. But I think they looked at the bid as being somebody who could be a good advocate for them, and that's where this is coming from. And I would agree that this is about waiving. This isn't about anything else. They're using different terms. I think when we first met with them, they were still looking for how this was going to work. But in the end, I don't think they see any taking over of the Farmer's Market. It's just a matter of they're just going to say, we're going to be a supporter, sponsor, however. You know, you get a lot of Farmer's Market sponsors, where you get a lot of names from different groups. It's not to make this a city event, such as the Unity and Community Event. It's just a matter of, they just want the fees waived. And quite honestly, I think if, however they can get the fees waived, is what they'll go along with. But the $15,000 parking thing was something that Mr. Larson did put out on the table. Ms. Lang was there as well, and I think both of them were very genuine in that request about the parking. So I think that was, I think that's really, at this point, what's there on the table that they want to offer up. And that's something I think would need to go back resolution-wise, because then, because they're making a certain promise to us, we want to make sure that that request is honored.
If there's no further discussion, we will go to direction of the city manager. Is that right?
So where are we going with this, then?
Well, I guess the consensus of the council, from what I'm getting, is that you would prefer they put in a formal request under like a resolution or under a special event. They've already, we've already approved the Farmer's Market special event for 2018. I believe it was already on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. No, not yet? Okay, Kathy's saying, no, I thought we did. Okay. So they have not. I think we all know that we've gotten a lot of emails from people that support the Farmer's Market that are, that feels that we should look at waiving their fees. The bid thought this would be a way to help the city and move a great event under their, they're not, like I said, they're not going to run it. They're not going to be in charge of it. They just would be sponsoring, in a sense, with no money sponsoring them. But they would commit to the city that they would continue to pay their $15,000 plus, I think it's been over 15 at times, towards the parking utility and waiving the fees.
So at the end of the day, we lose $9,000. If we do this, we lose $9,000.
Or we could lose $15,000. Because they don't have to pay the parking utility.
So what we're really being asked to do is waive the fees.
That's correct.
For a promise that they'll pay us $15,000 for the parking, which they've been doing.
They've been doing it for a number of years, but that has not been by contract. It's been more by request and honoring that request. What I'm hearing is the council wants to see that, if that's going to happen, they want to see that from the bid. Is that a fair statement? Do you want to see it from the bid?
You want the bid to come in and.
Put it in writing.
Partnership with.
Put it in writing.
Some kind of MOU, memorandum of understanding, or something along those lines.
And I would think that the bid is getting some benefit from the Farmer's Market because of the spill-off from the people that go to the Farmer's Market into the various businesses in the bid because of the Farmer's Market. So I would think that there would be, you know, some financial commitment from them. Yes, they are making the parking, which they're getting a benefit from as well, from, you know, the parking that the city provides. So, again, I just, my concern is managing by exceptions.
And in fact, they're asking us to waive a fee. Councilmember Palmary.
When we talk about exceptions, we are making some very significant exceptions to policies that we've discussed for quite a period of time, at least since I've been on my very short first two years here with regard to tip policies. And we made a pretty significant exception to what we had been discussing with our decisions recently. I can't see that where you compare a long-running, 22-week gathering of a significant portion of the central city as managing by exception. It truly is exceptional. And I believe almost every council member on this dais has received some of those letters from those business owners who have said that, yes, it has helped revive their downtown, it's helped them keep their doors open downtown when we had the expansion of that Farmer's Market, on the Saturday market, that is. So, yeah.
Councilman Peck.
One, just one question for the gentlelady. History, what, do you have a, is there a number of years that defines history and basically says it's now become a part of the culture of the community?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question.
Is 15 years a period of time for, if an event has been around for 15 years? Is that, does that, has that become a part of the community? And is now historical and is?
Continuity of 22 weeks is what I was referring to. I wasn't saying that they've been here for a century. But who knows? 100 years from now, they could be.
Organizations that have, well, they may only have one event a year, but over the years have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to benefit nonprofits that go to meet that requirement of providing a service that the city does not need to supply?
That's a very good point, Mr. Peck. So I guess it really bottom line, you know, is, do we want to support the bid's request, the business owner's requests, the Farmer's Market, the people who are attending the Farmer's Market? I mean, it kind of, although it wasn't a petition of 4,700 people, we're saying we want to promote a healthy community. And I think that here we have collaboration, continuity, and a healthy perspective. Let's support that.
Collaboration, community, healthy perspective. Events that promote that. Walks, runs, family events. I know that there are events, and this whole discussion started when the event fees were increased. There's events out there that next year are going to see their costs double and triple. Now, again, not against the Farmer's Market, support it. Over the years, I've attended it. It's a great thing. But think about it. There are other events that have been around for years and years and years that are, that are under this special event policy, that are seeing these 200, 300, 400% increases. And are we going to then say, well, you're different? Yeah, you've been doing this for 15 years. You've raised this significant amount of money for the, for a nonprofit, for something in our community. You benefit our community for this? We got to think about it. Everybody knows I'm the director of a special event. And I'm going to see significant increase next year. What am I doing? I'm going and knocking on doors, getting, so I can get my costs covered. Because I know that that, the city provides me a service that helps me to do what I need to do to raise my, to help the community through this nonprofit, the same way that these other events do the same thing. Several years ago, we had SOTUS days come forward, asking us to waive their special events. SOTUS has been around, we heard today, 47 years. Council said, nope. Again, not against it. Just saying, we got to think about it.
We've also heard corporations, big corporations, consider going elsewhere. And we've made special accommodations to keep them here. So I guess I would just ask, and this will be the last thing I'll say on it tonight, that people consider what downtown would be like if the Farmer's Market wasn't there? Just imagine that street Saturday mornings in the summer, if they decide to go somewhere else.
Councilman Crozey.
I think the Farmer's Market's really a unique animal in Oshkosh. I mean, not all events are created equal, just like all holidays aren't created equal. I know people look to what the cities have to offer when you move to a city, and the Farmer's Markets are important to a lot of people. So I think it's just not a smart idea to lose business possibly. I mean, they jam-pack Main Street, and a lot of Main Streets sit empty on Saturday mornings because everybody's shopping at malls or at convenience stores. And they're not on Main Streets, and our Main Streets are full, and those stores, a lot of times, are full too. So I just see it as a totally unique situation, that we should be lucky and happy to have them in our city. Other cities that are larger than ours don't have Farmer's Market equal to ours, in some cases. So I just feel like we're very lucky to have them. So I would support the bid's request.
Just one quick comment before we move on. I think we have to know, what is the bid requesting?
To waive the fees, they're requesting it.
I think what the mayor is asking for is something formal.
It has to be formal. If it's waiving fees, it's waiving fees. If there's a deal about the parking, that has to be spelled out. But we have to know exactly what it is. They're not supporting it. They're just asking that the fees be waived. If that's the situation, it's got to be clear. Deputy Mayor Herman.
The bid is part of the city of Oshkosh. They're exempt from paying fees, period. So if they're sponsoring or not, I mean, if they're willing to take the event under their arm as part of being government, they don't pay the fees. It's no different in the city of Oshkosh. We don't pay fees for any of our events. The bid is part of. We approve their budget. They take taxes from their membership. They're part of the city of Oshkosh, the bid.
All right, let's move on. I think we've talked about this enough. They have to know that we have to know what they're looking for. It's got to be specific, and I think that I agree, it's a slippery slope. It's a slippery slope. Once you start justifying waiving fees, and you can wordsmith it all day long, we've got to be specific, so there's no misunderstanding of what's going on. Next is direction of the city manager on preparing ordinance to implementing boards and commission study findings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've provided council down to five specific items that are in your agenda packet. These are items that were, excuse me, agreed to through our survey that we did with all the boards and commissions and council members, greater than 60%. So there were five items there. I'd like some direction from council as to which ones you would like us to put into ordinance form to do any or all of these five. We'll bring it back. I'm not asking for a vote tonight, just which ones do you want to bring back so we can put them on an agenda as a formal ordinance for your consideration. I won't promise we'll do them at the next meeting, because some of these may involve some transition issues, depending on the nature of the board or commission. I know the Parking Utility and Traffic Review Board have already essentially consented to their consolidation. So that one wouldn't necessarily be one, but I know the Grand Opera House folks would like to stay on the landmarks. And so that would result in some transition issues. We'll work through those and present those to you as some options. But just, it, maybe it'd be easier to say which ones you don't want. I don't know which, what works best for you, but I'd rather put our resources into doing something that the council wants, rather than something that you don't even want to consider.
Councilman Peck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Roloff, I will, I'll provide my feedback on the Long Range Finance Committee suggestion. After our next meeting, that is something that we will be discussing at the next Long Range Finance Committee meeting. So that is something that we'll be covering. But I think, obviously, the, is the consolidating the Parking and Traffic Review Advisory Board, I mean, with significantly saying that, you know, that, with the amount of agreed to that, I think that that's something to move forward. I would say not to consider number four, as it's not recommended by the city attorney. Yeah, so I would, that would be my input.
All right, one quick thing. I agree with the grand going into landmarks. The other thing is, we should put a date on this, because there is an election coming up. And we reassign people to boards and commissions after the election. So what would be a workable date to get this taken care of?
It'd be, I just don't want to promise the next meeting. I think what we need to do is, by March, you need to make these decisions so that, as the terms end. And I think the appropriate thing to do is transition it right there at the change of terms, which, that would just make the most sense.
Councilperson Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, Mr. Roloff, I support one, two, and three. I do not support four and five. Thank you.
Councilperson Palmary.
I'm going to support one, three, and five.
Councilwoman Herman, or Deputy Mayor Herman.
I guess if we're weighing in now, I guess I would, I would support one. I'll wait to hear from Mr. Peck's committee.
I'll wait to hear from Mr. Peck's committee. One, three, I would not, I would follow the city attorney's recommendation on four. And I, I know council member Pansky has passion for the bike and ped, but when you think about, they have to go through the traffic review to get approval for, for that, either that or the trans, I see him closer aligned to traffic review than I do the transit, so. I know that they probably aren't real interested, other than maybe parking, bike parking in parking lots would have a connection to the parking utility, but if we are, if there's consensus, then I would say that the bike and ped could consolidate with parking utility and traffic review, but it's up to the rest of the council members, too. So just my thinking is...
What I think, what I do then, because you, I'm not asking, I really wasn't anticipating, you know, you're not voting on these tonight.
No, I know.
I think we'll definitely take four off, because I haven't hurt anybody, and we'll bring them, we'll bring the rest in number two with respect to, courtesy to the Long Range Finance Committee. We'll hold off on that, but we'll work on one, three, and five, and then the council can vote on them at the appropriate time. Does that make sense? Yep?
Yep. Councilperson Pansky.
Mr. Roloff, will there be an opportunity for any of these board members to speak to any of these potential changes?
That's a good point. What I will do is I will direct staff to make sure they put it on the next agenda for any affected board or commission, just so they know. I, you know, we know that Traffic Review and Parking have already spoken in, but I know that Bike and Ped, I think they've spoke, yeah, they have not really spoken in.
We are busy. We have full agendas, we have, you know, two and a half, three hour long meetings. This is, this has not been given much attention. We are in the middle of our, our Bike and Ped plan rewrite, and we have a lot of work to do, so this, this has not been given significant attention at this time. And I think all of the members on that board would appreciate the opportunity to put their input in on this, since it affects them as well.
I'll make sure that staff puts it on for each of the impacted board, so they can weigh in on this as well.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Councilperson Palmary.
Yeah, I just, I had a question for Councilwoman Pansky. So did they not get the survey as well, when all the surveys went out? I'm confused.
Oh, yes, they did, but we didn't anticipate this moving forward, to be honest.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I've heard from the chair of Bike and Ped, who, I, I will say, the chair of Bike and Ped is against this idea.
Yes, everybody is.
Yeah, I, I can't speak for it, but the chair spoke with me and made it very clear. So I'm, I can share that with you. So thank you. I, I've got sufficient direction to, to bring it forward for you to, to make some calls on that.
We've got to drop that date for getting this on the agenda.
Very good.
Okay, next is process on issuing open liquor licenses. Mr. Roloff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A week or two ago, City Clerk Huber and I met with some other staff members about just liquor licenses in general. And we put something in the weekly newsletter to just basically start to get you thinking about this, and this is the first time the group has had a chance to, to hear this and discuss it. But council had amended their policy back in 2014, and that was based on lack of activity of some liquor licenses. And we were supposed to bring them back after a one-year period of inactivity. And staff has been diligently doing that, but these extensions have continued. And you may recall that the policy is in your agenda packet that was done back in 2014. But we also took the liberty of taking a look at these licenses that were closed and what's happened with them. And some, including, if you don't count Marion Road, which actually should say pre-2010, because that one had been reserved for Marion Road before I even got here in 2008. So that's literally been 10 years. But other ones, Morgan District's been 2014, Packers Pub 2015, you can see that a lot of them have gone over. Staff and I have, have looked at different ways, and from my perspective, they are a tool, just like we talked about earlier with the, the premier entertainment, economic development district. This is a tool for economic development. And in the past, I haven't suggested this because I didn't think it would necessarily work. And this doesn't require an ordinance change, this really is council's policy on how you do it. Rather than allowing people to hang on to these for, even though it says one year, it effectively becomes indefinite. And I would even put the Marion Road one in this category. Perhaps what we need to do is bring all these inactive license in, back into the city, and have a pool of them, so that anybody who has a great idea can come forward and, and use this pool of licenses, and then the council can determine that. For those of you who have been in Leadership Oshkosh, or are familiar with Leadership Oshkosh, they've done a tongue-in-cheek mock council meeting on this very subject, and it's affectionately called the beauty pageant. The reason is because it's competing people coming in, and then you have to say, we're going to give away one license to a multitude of, of different uses. The tables have turned. We have, by my count, as many as seven inactive licenses that we're not, that we haven't done anything on. You can take a look at these, but, you know, there's two available right now, plus all these inactive ones. And I would throw Marion Road into that, even though I've been very protective since I've been here for nearly 10 years protecting that one, I even think that one should be thrown into the mix. If we have seven licenses available, they're protected individually rather than protected together. And the council, in their wisdom, can make a decision on which ones should be getting these limited licenses. I think it'll make it more powerful that, and as activity picks up, you can change your policy again, but I think maybe we need to call these back in. Now, our hesitancy as staff is that it's hard to look these businesses in the eye and say, I want to take your license away. You know what I'm talking about. You've had the, the puppy dog eyes, and people looking at you, please don't take my license away. But if we bring them together, and we have seven, then when they have something, a community I've worked in before, we essentially created a waiting list. And if you were at the top of the list, and a liquor license was available, we'd let you know. If you, if you're not ready for it, we just put you at the bottom of the list, you work your way up. After a while, it became a nine to 18-month rotation. So as long as you had something, typically what you do then is you go to council and say, I'd like liquor licenses, when will you be ready? Well, we're going to, here's our schedule of activities, here's our construction schedule, things like that. And you say, okay, we'll give you the liquor license, but you have to be ready by the date you set. So I, I'll be ready in nine months. Okay. In nine months, if they're not ready, they go to the back of the line again. And it's, and that's just the way it goes. The businesses learn to manage this by themselves, by merely finding out from the city clerk, how many licenses are available, where am I on the list? And then the council generates more control over this. And I think it'd actually be more flexible. The seven people, or the five licenses, they'll tell you that it's going to hurt them, but in reality, it's going to help everyone, including them. It's just something to think about. If, I just wanted to at least get it on the table. I certainly want to welcome questions, both now and as we move on, but it, but it will require you to revoke these licenses, as the city attorney will advise you, and that's going to be a tough one. But if the law, if you want to change your logic on it, it may make it for a more effective tool. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Pansky.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Roloff, I, I think it's a great idea, it's worth a shot at least. I mean, we are kind of in a pattern here, where we're just waiting for something to happen, there's, we're not really putting enough pressure on some of these entities to actually do something. My one question is, in your previous life, did you have any experience where this system hindered the sale? I think the, the item that comes to our attention is that this building is for sale, and if we take away the site, the license, that it, it won't sell. Is that true? Have you experienced that, or is that not the case at all in, in this system?
Generally, what happens is people will actively monitor it if they're, if they're live, in terms of they have a live one that they want to work on. And typically, what's done is the city clerk's office has contacted, where am I on the list? And if they are down the list a little ways, they will actually contact people at the head of the list. Because at the top of the list, if we have a license, we're going to let number one know that there's a license available. And if they don't respond in, say, 30 days, then they go to the bottom of the list. If they don't have an application, they go to the bottom of the list. So what they do is, if they're number four on the list, they're calling one, two, and three, saying, will you just call the clerk and just say, you can bump me down the list? And then it manages itself, then that rises to the top. If we have seven licenses, those folks can actively be applying for a license right now, but they have to do something with it, rather than just sitting on it. And what happens is, right now, everybody's sitting on these things.
Right. So my question is, to follow up with that, is, is the clerk's office prepared to handle this sort of system?
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Communicate with everybody and then start the list.
Great, thank you.
Councilperson Palmary.
I just had a question. So it looks like we have 14 listings on the matrix that accompanied this, and it looks like five of them precede 2017, and then it looks like three, six, seven are in 2017 that are coming up for renewal, right, in 2018? Or those already came up and we gave the extension?
No. The ones in 2017, per your policy, after the one year expires, then we would bring them before you.
So I didn't count those in my number.
That's what I was trying to get at the numbers.
Right. We've got five on this list that are six, that are pre-2017, plus we have two available right now. So we have seven available right, seven inactive licenses. So, and, and the potential, depending on what happens with those people, that number could even grow. But to have them all scattered, you don't have the ability to, if somebody did have a, a great idea that was not on this list, they'd be left out in the cold.
Well, I think this is a good start for that discussion, and I think that council in the past has had similar conversations. I'd actually kind of like to see something similar for some of our land that's sitting out there with options that have been stagnant, but that's another can of worms.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Hey, just a quick question. Under our current policy, then, once we reissue that license, we can't go back to that owner and say, three months? I mean, I know we did on the one, we put six months out there. But even if they're inactive now, can we go out there and say, what are you doing with it?
Yes, we can, because of council policy, once their expiration date, their extension...
I'm, I'm just saying, we renewed it for 17, and before it comes up for renewal, could we say, two, three months later, all right, we renewed your license for a year, there's still no activity the first three months, what's going on, or we're going to, can we bring it back to council to revoke it?
I did not count, I did not count those in the numbers, and I would think that you want to honor what you told them. So you gave them till July first.
Gave them a year, okay.
We wouldn't even talk about those until after we dealt with the first five, plus two. We call those in, we still have to go through a revocation regardless of, even if the ones that are renewed on July 1, you got to go, I, I'm sorry to tell you, you got to go through that painful process of telling them, we're going to have to take away your license. But I think if they understand the process change, you're going to have somebody sing on the blues. I'm not going to sugarcoat this.
No, I understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a direction?
Thank you. That's, we'll start working on something like this and present it something more formal for you to work on. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next is the second chapter, citizen statements to council. Pam, did anyone sign up?
Yes, I have Patricia Diener, 1316 Broad. This evening, in regard to, I'm pretty pleased what's going on over at Salt Park. I think it's going to help in a lot of ways with digging over there. And I'm come this evening, too, because I haven't had a chance to, I've been tied up with my father-in-law this past week. But I, why don't you know, we're getting a lot of information from the city, and I don't know how true it is, but there was a possibility, and there could be still a possibility, that we might buy my father-in-law's home, and we might buy the lot next door. But few people came down to the city to inquire about it, and they said that they wanted to build a parking lot there. They said, the only way you can build a parking lot is to put curbs and gutters in. And I thought there was enough drainage over there that would you still have to put more plumbing in over there, over on the lot behind Gillar? And...
I guess whatever, to answer that, I guess whatever our ordinance says, when you redo a parking lot, I don't know off the top of my head what's all required in our ordinance, but if it requires curb and gutter, drainage, whatever, you would have to abide by the current ordinance.
Okay, yeah. Because they're inquired, somebody else inquired about the house, too, not just us. There's another person, and then they didn't know the house was for sale until I said, yeah, the lot next door, but my father-in-law's house is going to be for sale. So I don't know if the, there's another monk family might be interested. I don't know if they just want to buy the lot, build a house like us, if we did, if we go through it. But it's just that, when we come down to the planning commission, we like to get the right information, because one party's hearing one thing, another's hearing another, and, you know, that's, it went through us when we had to build our garage. They said we could have a bigger garage, and when you get down there, you can't have it. It's the, something has to be in writing the right way, and not say you can have it, and then you go to the plans, and then they say, no. I think it would be just helpful in that matter, but I'm happy for the, the park that got done. And I want to thank Mr. Moeller's secretary for cleaning up the yard over by my aunt's house, over off of the creek. I know there's a lot of weeds that were up there, and the city went over there, part of the parks, parkin' to clean it up, and I do appreciate it, because my cousin just moved over there from Madison. She made the move to come to Oshkosh, found out that her cousins lived here, and we're all together. And I want to let everybody know, the Polar Plunge is February 17th, all invited to come. It's going to have a good time. Nikki puts on a big show for it. She works all year long for a special event, and it, it came from Jenny LaBelle. She started it all these years, and Jenny stepped down and went to the justice, and Nikki's doing a great job.
Is there anyone else, Pam?
No one else.
Next is council member announcements and statements, a report from meeting with Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Alliance and Go HNI. Councilmember Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So just real briefly, I did attend the Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Alliance meeting last week, along with Shelley Renkey from Go HNI, and it was pretty exciting to see some of the new neighbors, neighborhood associations' representatives, and some from the very beginning. And I just wanted to give you a quick little update, that they are now working on some neighborhood goals for 2018, and, and one of the, the elements is putting together a handbook for associations. As new associations are coming on, they are answering questions that have obviously been asked a number of times, and while Go HNI is a wonderful resource for them, they've asked to put that together, as well as a possibility of some kind of mentorship. They're also concerned about communication, both between the neighborhood associations themselves and the departments within City Hall. And so those are some of the goals that they're going to be working on, trying to improve those communication channels. They also mentioned working on some PR and social media things along those lines. They also wanted to ask, and the city manager, I guess, is working with IT, about being, individuals having the ability to subscribe to the city manager's newsletter on an individual basis. And it sounds like that's going to be an easy yes.
It's done.
Oh, it's done.
Thank you. It was a great suggestion.
So thanks to those neighborhood association representatives who showed up for that, and who have been showing up for that consistently, and, and giving their voice. And I guess there was just, you know, one other thing that they talked about, and that was a, a specific example of working with a, a city department. There were some neighbors who felt like there could have been maybe better notice on the information relating to the Clearwells, and some felt like they were adequately noticed and some didn't. So that was just an example that they gave. And, yeah, so thanks to all those folks who show up to that. And if you're thinking about your neighborhood being formally recognized as a neighborhood association, I encourage you to contact Planning Services Division.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Roloff, time for your announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a variety of items under my announcements and statements. These are purchases at the beginning of the year, we're re-upping some contracts, cooperative purchase of traffic signal camera systems, our wetland determination, as well as general stormwater services, and our site plan review services, as well as stormwater management assistance. We use different firms for different purposes, and these are annual contracts that we, these are estimated amounts, because these are on a time, time materials basis, on an as-needed basis. And then, just the Oshkosh... And then, just the Oshkosh Corporation update. If you haven't already gotten an invitation, please let me know if you did not. Oshkosh Corp. is gonna be showing off their design of their, of their new building next Monday afternoon. So happy to make sure you get invited to that, and I'm sure they'll be spreading the word after, after that meeting. Happy to answer any questions, if you have anything.
I did get the invite, and I will be on town.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.